All right, I think we are ready. And I want to welcome everyone to the City of Iowa City Work Session for March 3, 2022. And happy that people are online, are able to join us, and happy that everybody came out, even through the rain, to come here to your City Hall. So, welcome. The first item is to discuss the Human Rights Commission Recommendation for Additional Social Justice Racial Equity Grant Awards. So, this was a recommendation that was given by our HRC. I do see some members here, so welcome to you all. I think I see three members. Mark Priest, Commissioner Roger Lucella, and Jason Glass. So, welcome to you all. And then, we also see the staff that works with you all, which is our Equity Director, Stephanie Bowers. So, happy to see you here as well. Probably going to have our City Manager Jeff to start us off on this item.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, at your last meeting, you concurred with the Human Rights Commission Recommendations for your social, this fiscal year's Social Justice and Racial Equity Grant Awards. And there were seven awards that totaled the $75,000, which is this year's budget allocation for the Social Justice and Racial Equity Grants. I'm going to rewind a little bit. Last fall, the Human Rights Commission made a recommendation to you to expand the budget for the grant program from $75,000 to $150,000. That was their formal recommendation to you. As you may recall, when you passed next year's budget, you did increase the grant program funding from 75 to 100. So, we didn't go all the way to the 150 that the Human Rights Commission recommendation, that they recommended to you, but we did increase it substantially from 75 to 100,000. At your last meeting, the council expressed an interest in discussing whether to supplement this year's program with some extra dollars. So, again, we're focused on this fiscal year's award. You had 20 applications for the grant the Human Rights Commission recommended, and you approved seven of those. So, I think the conversation tonight was whether you wanted to supplement this year's funding, the $75,000, with additional funds to perhaps fund a few more applications. If you do that, there's, you know, there's a number of ways you can go about that. Probably the cleanest in my mind would be for you to determine the dollar amount that you'd like to supplement, and then allow the Human Rights Commission to come back to you with kind of a second tier of applications to fund. You've got, as you said, commissioners here. They may have some other thoughts on how best to do that, but to me, that seems like the appropriate process would be for allow them to give you a second set of recommendations. Keep in mind, these applications were created towards the end of last calendar year and submitted in that December timeframe. So, we probably also have to go back and check with these agencies and make sure they still have the capacity to move forward, because this is a fairly lengthy review process. And that's something that the city staff would be doing during a second round of applications, if that's indeed where we land. So, with that, I'm happy to try to answer questions, guide you in any way that you need. You also have commissioners here that can converse with you as well with their thoughts.
Well, I do think that there's a few things for us to consider. One, we did approve last for this upcoming fiscal year 100,000, so it wasn't quite double what the commissioners have asked of council. So, I think that's something that we should, you know, pay special attention to. Certainly, if there is something that we want to do for next year, we can not have that discussion tonight, maybe have that at a future time, but try to focus in on the recommendation that's before us right now. The agencies have already, you know, been told that they didn't get awards. So, I think that's something that we have to also consider, as our City Manager mentioned. Some of these projects, you know, they may have either abandoned or probably still have the need, and so that's something that the city staff would have to navigate. I personally would caution us to not engage with HRC members, because we don't have a quorum of them, and they have not been invited to be a part of our discussion, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'll offer just one additional comment. In speaking with Ms. Bowers, I'm aware that there is one other consideration, and that's that their normal rules call for all the funds to be allocated and out the door by June 1, which would be a tight timeline, should the council decide to do all additional money.
So, that's another consideration. Will the HRC have enough time, you know, to, do we know, how many meetings between now and June 1 is scheduled? And we'll just ask our staff. Sorry. Yep, thank you.
So, the commission has two work sessions. One's on May 12, one's on May 17, and then they have their regularly scheduled meeting on the 4th Tuesday.
So, in your opinion, do you think it's possible that they can have discussion and get back to council by our second meeting?
They could put it on the work session for the March 12. I mean, it'd be a quick turnaround, so. Or they could call a special meeting, too. I mean, they have that ability, too.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question that I don't know whether it would go to you or to Eric. Is this the type of thing where the process would have to be opened up again, or you can simply go back to the same pool of applicants for this year?
I think the plan would be to just go back to the applicants from this year. The commission has already ranked all of the applications, so it would be more just connecting with those organizations to see where they're at now in terms of what they submitted back on January 7.
I just want to make sure there weren't barriers to being able to do that. Thank you.
And you had said these are already ranked, so they wouldn't require a whole new review process of the remaining?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Stephanie, was there a, I'm looking at the Exhibit A to the recommendations, which I think in our prior packet had some highlighted numbers that showed the seven that were selected. But there were also, there was a second column with some additional dollar amounts. Were those ones that were scored or ranked, do you know?
I believe those were, some of the rankings included government, well, I should say universities and public schools.
Okay.
And so, per their rules, those organizations or entities, I should say, could only be secondary applicants and not primary. And so, I think that could be what you're referring to. The other thing is, when I looked at the packet, there's also, I think the Excel document just didn't, it didn't translate well to PDF. So, I think that's the other reason why it looked like that.
Just to be totally clear what we're discussing this evening, was there a recommendation beyond the 75,000 for this round?
Not that I'm aware of. It was just to say, it was, well, there, from the commissioners?
Yes.
Yes, so there was a recommendation for us to consider more funding, an additional 75,000.
On this round?
The original recommendation that the commission made back in November was for FY23. So, this, the round we're on now is FY22.
So, of the applications that came in, I'm so sorry, I feel like I'm just missing a piece here. Of the applications that came in, I know we got the recommendation to fund 75,000 of those, was there a recommendation for, if the council allocates additional funds, here's what we would want to award?
Not, not for FY22.
Okay. So, we don't have a sense of which or how much of this round?
They're requesting.
Well, one thought I have is, if the plan was to increase the amount to $100,000 next year, that we could perhaps use that as a, an amount to increase, you know, another $25,000 in this round to match what was proposed for the increase next year. Plus or minus, I mean, to try to capture, you know, based on the amounts of the ones that would be under consideration, see what we can capture for around $100,000 would be my suggestion.
So, Jeff, if we were, if we were to allocate additional funds, where would they come from?
Well, you'd have some, you'd have some choices there. I think this would be a good opportunity to look at your Black Lives Matter set aside that was created a couple of years ago. I think that fits the spirit of that set aside well. The council has not utilized that yet, other than the budget approval for the TRC. If that contract, if there is a facilitator contract that comes forward, our intention was to use that 1 million for that purpose. But other than that, those funds have been untouched, and this seems like a natural fit for that category. But if you wanted to explore other funding sources, I could help you navigate that.
Yeah, I do agree that this could be a great opportunity for us to tap into that, and for this to be the, I guess, one of the first, it would be really the second allocation of those funds. It could be a great thing for the Social Justice Equity Grant recipients to really further some of the work that they're doing. I think for me, one of the things why this was important is because only seven agencies were awarded, and there was lots and lots of good opportunities for our community. I'm not opposed to going up to the 25,000. I guess, you know, it would be better if council was a little direct and very specific as to what the allocated amount would be. So, if we're going to consider 25,000, then I think we need to be very clear about that. If we are going to give some latitude, which we've seen, once we had a, we did increase funding for another commission, that they really labored at trying to determine who was needing, needing the funds, and it came back to council, and then, at that point, council did approve all of the funds to be approved for that fiscal year. So, again, I would just say if 25,000 is where council wants to land, then I think we need to make that very clear. If there is another thought as to increasing it, then I think we need to come to up to amounts, so that the commission is very, they're directed as to what their ask is.
Do we have sort of a sense of how many more awards 25,000 would be? We've said we funded seven different initiatives with this round, and they said they've ranked sort of, so the commission seems like it has some idea of who is next in line and who's in line after that, and so on. Is there some idea of how many more grants this 25,000 would represent?
So, I believe the commission received 19. We had 20, and there was one that was withdrawn. But the commission, usually what they do is just go right in line with their ranking, and then when they get to that last candidate, if that's over the amount, then they go back and make adjustments for the overage for all the organizations that would get funding. And so, if you're, I mean, I would say if they've gotten six, they could probably get four to five more with a $25,000 increase.
I was going to say that this almost felt a little bit like chicken and egg, but I think you actually answered. The riddle in my head was that I would hate for HRC to go back and kind of look at dollar amounts in order to fund if they've already been ranked in order of strength. So, but it sounds like, you know, with that kind of leeway of being able to adjust, then there can be some kind of compromising if some projects are, I don't know. Perhaps there's one project that everyone said, oh, this was the eighth one, that's horrible, and it was $25,000. So, it'd be great. But maybe there are a couple, and it divides out to something like that. I firmly believe in giving the leeway. I would just hate that it would be more that people would look at what projects to award based on the amount that we were giving, if that makes sense.
Yeah, indeed, the application form asks organizations if they could do the project with less funding, and so they have very specific answers for each organization as to whether or not lowering the amount would affect their ability to do the proposal.
So, they wouldn't necessarily have to go with the asks of, say, the organization asks for 10,000, they could go with the 5,000 and feel comfortable with doing that.
Correct.
I'm comfortable with the method that they've used all along for many years as far as determining how to distribute the funds. So, I would be comfortable with adding another 25,000 and be comfortable with them making a decision on which of the remaining could utilize those funds the best.
I agree.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And council, just so we're clear, so we can bring this back to you next time, you're looking for it out of the Black Lives Matter Fund that Jeff mentioned a moment ago, is that okay for a funding source?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Great. All right. Any more items on this? All right. Thanks to everyone for being a part of that conversation. The next on our agenda is Discuss Process for Handling ARPA Funding Request. And I'm going to turn this one over to Jeff, our City Manager, as well.
Yeah, I'll be brief here. I just want to call your attention to a late handout that we thought may help the discussion tonight. No new information here, just kind of presented in a simplified way. You have before you a summary of our ARPA funding priorities that we talked about last September, and then the commitments that we've made as of earlier this week. As a reminder, the city, and you can see this summary at the very bottom of this handout, the city has received approximately 18.3 million from our ARPA allocation. We have 3.6 million in Cumber, and that's the Direct Assistance Program with Johnson County, the Forest View Relocation Project, and the Mobile Crisis Expansion. So, those three commitments combined are the 3.6 million. So, you have a remaining balance, the city has a remaining balance in ARPA funds of approximately 14.6 million. The top of the page that you see there, again, are those priorities, categories, if you will, of funding that we talked about last, last fall, last September it was. And I just wanted to clarify, in each of those categories, we gave a range of funding at that time, because, of course, we didn't have specifics of those efforts nailed down. Those, that range is anywhere from 15 million to 32 million. So, you have to be careful when you look at that. You can't just look at that right-hand figure and assume that we can fund all those at the highest level. There's going to be some of those categories that have to be funded on that lower end. And as you look at things right now with our first three awards, we're at the, we're at the higher end of two of those categories and the lower end of one. So, as we progress, we're just going to have to keep an eye on that and balance things out. I think council's focus tonight, as I understand it, is largely around nonprofit assistance and the process to go through there. There are two categories that we identified for nonprofit assistance. The first one was in the emergent needs category. That was the 500,000 to 1 million, as envisioned. That was essentially another round of funding, similarly to what we did during the kind of height of the pandemic, to supplement operating dollars for our nonprofit agencies. We have not started that initiative yet, and in our last update memo, we suggested that council may want to consider shifting that down to the capital needs section, the strategic investment needs. That's, of course, that's your call, but when it comes to those capital needs, that's the 3 million to $6 million category on our strategic investments. And at the time, what we had considered was a social service needs assessment that would perhaps be done at a county level, perhaps in partnership with the county, to get a better idea of capacity building projects that are most in need in our nonprofit sector, and then to provide seed funding to tackle some of those top priorities. That would, that would entail a larger, lengthier process, where we actually hire someone that has expertise to do the study, perhaps spend a year doing the study, and then actually making these awards probably in 2023 or early 2024. Of course, council has discretion to go that route or to take proposals in some structured way, and I think that was kind of the nexus of today's conversation. So, happy to answer questions, but that's a quick overview on the late handout and where we stand with ARPA today.
Jeff, I have a question. Is there, are there any barriers to using these funds within this fiscal year?
No, no.
I had spoken with someone at county who had said that they had a certain amount, and it may be because they've already allocated where all of their money is going to go, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, you know, we've received half of the money to date, and the other half will be received before this fiscal year. So, really, the deadlines that we're looking at are the expenditure deadlines. We have, have to make our expenditure commitments by the end of '24, and then have those funds expended by the end of '25, is that, '26? So, really, those commitments need to be made by the end of 2024, with the actual dollars being expended by the end of '26. But we can move as fast as, as the council wants to this fiscal year.
I do wonder if they just meant like reporting for their financial book, but I don't see that as an issue on our end, no.
I don't think so.
If I can throw out a suggestion, and I don't want to derail anybody else's thought process, but as Jeff was talking and said, that there's the possibility of sort of folding in the emerging, emerging nonprofit assistance into this larger bucket, I'm a little loath to do that, simply because this would be something that delays agencies getting their money, and I think that there's room for both. I think that, I like the idea of actually being able to look at this at a larger level, but I think that to combine the two sources or the two buckets, at this point, I think that there's sort of a, an economic hardship, long haul COVID effect, in the same way that, that people who get COVID, you know, are experiencing it. And so, I think that it makes sense to keep them separate so that people can get their money, agencies or projects can get their money sooner.
With the capital planning process, has there been, my assumption is, this is bigger than just Iowa City, though it would be county, I mean, all the county services involved. Has there been conversations on any level to learn of the county's interests or of the municipality?
Not really since the joint work session we had with the County Board of Supervisors, when it was just really mentioned that this is something that we can explore. The county's identified quite a bit of their expenditures already, so we'd have to go back and chat with their, their staff about, you know, whether that's something they'd want to entertain or not. I would hesitate that, I would hesitate to do it just on an Iowa City level. I just don't think it's, it's going to provide the meaningful results that we need to unless it's done on a county level. But staff has not had that detailed conversation with, with the county.
It seems to me that that's something that we could undertake with other municipalities, too, even if it's not the county government, because most nonprofits are kind of more or less tied within their geographic area that may be within cities. I assume also, Jeff, that none of those conversations have happened, right?
Correct.
Okay.
One of the things that we do need to try to focus in on today is, how do we handle some of the funding requests, and what are allowable, you know, what, what does emergency, you know, nonprofit assistance mean? Now, we, you know, as far as process, I think there are some things that we can kind of lean on. We have our CWBG Home Funds Process that happens. We just heard from the Social Justice Equity Grant, how the HCD, I'm sorry, how they do their process within the HRC. So, there are a few things that we can lean on for, you know, at least the structural way of how the process will go, but we also have to determine, well, who's going to, you know, receive those applications, who's going to review them, and what that criterion will be.
Jeff, can you remind us of the, we do have some process in place for emergency requests. Can you just kind of outline what that is?
Yeah, so, a couple of years ago, the local nonprofit Houses and Homes came before the council with some operational assistance requests, and the council struggled with that request a little bit, because there was, obviously, we have an aid to agencies process that is designed for, to receive applications, to be vetted, and then ultimately for awards to be recommended to the city council. And that was one that came out of sequence a little bit. And after that process, the council asked staff to create an emergency support program. And so, we created that at that time, and it's a simple application process that goes directly to our NDS staff who vet that, and then we can make awards as, as staff. So, it really doesn't even come before council. But it's pretty tight criteria to qualify as an emergency. We've only used it a few times since it was established. We used it, for example, for the winterization of some of the Forest View mobile homes. Obviously, that was the situation. Winter was coming. We couldn't wait for the next aid to agency cycle. That process allowed us to provide them some funding out of sync with all the other nonprofit requests. We also used it recently to fund the CWJ's efforts to increase applications for rental assistance, to help those in need access state funding and general assistance funding that was created for rental assistance. Again, staff, we made the determination that forcing them to wait six months to go through that process would do more harm, because there were people in need of that rental assistance immediately. So, those are some examples of some emergent needs that we have, that we've funded through that process. When we get other requests at the staff level, we will refer them to the aid agencies process, and whether they're a legacy agency or whether they're, would qualify as an emerging agency, that's where we direct them. I will say, during COVID, when we got the additional CWG dollars, we created a nonprofit assistance program. I'm going to look at Tracy to correct me if I'm wrong here, but that's one that we did not take through HCDC. Is that, that correct? We did that all at the staff level. Yeah, I believe so. In order to get those dollars out quickly, we put together a COVID nonprofit assistance program. We accepted those applications at the staff level, and then made those awards, again, just to expedite the process. And those were largely used for very reactionary types of needs because of the pandemic. So, we established some of those neighborhood nests with those. We provided some mental health funding as, as a few examples through that process. So, you know, you could look to, to that, too, and you could say, well, let's, this is a one-time grant fund. We can create a one-time process for, for use.
Is that COVID nonprofit assistance program done?
Yeah, but that's, when we, when we established those priorities in September, and we had that 500,000 to 1 million emergency nonprofit assistance, that's what we had in mind. Of course, we didn't really know what the needs of the pandemic would be, but we, we thought another round of that type of funding may be needed, and that's why we put it in there. We haven't really felt that need. We haven't been getting those same type of requests that we got early on in the pandemic, you know, help us establish that nest, help us, you know, bridge this critical gap. We're not hearing those requests as much. It's not to say that there aren't certainly needs caused by the pandemic out there, but that's why staff is saying you may want to consider sliding that down to capital needs. If we're not seeing the, the operational needs being as heavy as some of the, the capital needs. If we're not seeing the operational needs being as heavy as some of the capital needs, you have that flexibility. I completely understand what the mayor Protem's saying too, that maybe there are those operation needs and we need to keep those separate. That's really for you all to decide.
One of the things that we have here as a program or project is the eviction program. So I am not exactly sure if, you know, when we kind of started talking about this, we were still in limbo about what was going to be happening at the state level. And so where, does this seem to be still a priority, I guess? I mean, we funded in different ways.
Yeah, we, this one's been on hold a little bit because the state announced a new rapid rehousing program, and we wanted to see what those rules would be so we could best leverage our funds. We didn't want to create a program that was largely duplicating what the state was doing. We do feel like there's still going to be a need for a greater eviction prevention effort over the next few years. So we're currently trying to work to create a eviction prevention proposal that would probably last two to three years and would be designed to kind of wrap around and fill those gaps that the state rapid rehousing program will not fill. We also think that we might be able to provide some continued funding for the coordinated entry process, which I think is really needed right now. And then also, part of our affordable housing plan, part of our affordable housing plan recommendations has been to launch a risk mitigation program for the community. And we think that might be able to be wrapped into the same eviction prevention program. So we're probably looking at the lower end of that range, closer to the 1 million as opposed to the 2 million. But from a staff standpoint and talking with some of the nonprofit housing providers, we do think eviction prevention, additional eviction prevention efforts will be necessary despite the state's commitments.
Sure. One thing I think I hear kind of some of the discussion is some consideration about the emergency part of the emergency nonprofit assistance and perhaps no longer in that same sense of urgency. And then the other end of that spectrum, of course, which I definitely applaud the ideas and the goals of is the longer-term assessment and the capital planning. Do we maybe just need to have something that's in between those two stages to sort of take the place of the emergency nonprofit, rather than rolling it into the other fund, something like, I don't know if you would call it a ongoing or, you know, something that would be somewhat similar, maybe not quite with the same emergency, but also let's, you know, help agencies kind of bridge the gap from going from the emergency to back to, I don't want to use the word "normal," but something more normal. And then that would maybe allow us to use some of the things the city has already created, so we don't have to recreate wheels and, or yeah, recreate the wheel or anything like that.
Yeah, I think that's, that's an appropriate step if that's the will of the council.
So long as it's defined is kind of where I've been all along. I think that I have been able to think about this quite a bit, and I do think that over, even without COVID, the need in the community has gone up and up and up for direct aid agencies. And they've come before us to say, we need more, and previous councils have upped their budget. But I think with COVID, you know, the needs were so vast. And then equally, you know, funding sources dried up. So I think that there is something to think of this, again, I go into the metaphor of like long-term COVID impact. And so, well, actually, it's not a metaphor, but that this might be something that we could consider a way to help agencies. I just want to make sure that we define it and that this is, and I think that staff has shown time and again that they're able to take existing structures and either repurpose them or already have those structures in place to be able to gather the input that they need so that we can do this fairly quickly. But I think that we just, we need to decide on what those parameters are so that everyone can get them.
I do wonder if we focused in on allocating or talking about some funding amounts. For example, for the emergency nonprofit assistance funding is $500,000 to $1 million. So we know that this program goes until 2024, and all the funds for the entire, ARPA funds has to be spent. Or is that awarded? Is it awarded?
Awarded and spent by 2026, Jeff said.
Awarded.
Committed, yeah.
Yes, committed. So, you know, if the $500,000 to $1 million is where we will remain, we don't know that just yet. But potentially, if I'm thinking about like, like the, some of the current commissioners, how they do their allocation of funds is once a year. But if we were to do something kind of, you know, immediate, and then had somehow increased budgets for the annuals, then that could get us to the emergent need right away. And then on an ongoing basis, either we have, you know, kind of what Council Bergers was talking about, well, I think she was somewhat alluding to, you know, that nonprofit assistance program, that COVID. Maybe there is a separate, you know, one that we do for that, or we can just add, you know, a little more money to a normal process for the nonprofits. But I wonder if there's any thoughts on or any interest in trying to determine how we could, you know, figure out an emergent thing now, and then how we can consistently have individuals get some support between now and 2024? Or do we just put it all in right now in one pot? Or do we kind of spread it out?
Well, I liked what I was hearing Sean and Megan saying about kind of not necessarily as emergent as we saw in the height of the pandemic, but still, you know, COVID-related, obviously, and, you know, tying to impacts that we've seen and needing to get that out the door much more quickly than I think the needs assessment would allow. I agree with all of that. And I think it also is, you know, the thing that I said off his last meeting or meeting before, that I'm just concerned that if we don't have some kind of like announcement or understanding that, you know, just everybody needs to know what we're doing, because we have agencies that are very skilled at asking for money, and that's absolutely what they should be doing. And those who maybe are kind of like waiting for us to say these funds are available. And I think it can be tricky or unfair if we just start doing like a first come, first served without ever saying this is what we're doing, right? And that's my, kind of my concern with when we entertain one-off requests. Do we have any pending requests other than the CWJ wage theft one?
Not that I'm aware of.
Do we know of?
No.
Okay. And Jeff, you'd mentioned like kind of sending organizational requests through the aid to agencies process. Is there kind of like criteria for that that are shared with folks? Or, do you know what I mean? Like, how would an organization who comes to the city know if that might fit into like the emergency versus the annual?
Yeah, I think our staff, Tracy, maybe you can come up and help me here. You know, if we get an inquiry from a nonprofit that says, you know, we have this need, can you help us? Usually, it's Tracy and her staff that'll say, okay, here are the possible avenues that we may be able to assist you. If it's operational assistance, it's probably going to be through the aid to agencies program. If it's, you know, something more urgent or a one-time expense, like a capital-type expense, we'll explore other options like social justice racial equity grant or a climate grant. So I don't know if you have any examples or?
We look at the request and find out, one, is it truly, does it meet our definition of emergency? Can you wait for our regular allocation processes? If not, especially if it's pandemic-related, do we have, is it the opportunity fund, emergent situation, the affordable housing fund, or what we could fit it in? And if it meets those criteria, then we're talking to Jeff about where we could fund it and what pot of funds it could come from.
Do you have a sense, Tracy, that there's some need for this kind of less emergent that we're talking about?
We're getting calls, I've gotten a couple from nonprofits wondering, you know, when another application round. They're aware that something's coming at some point, and they want to know when it is. So setting that or letting them advance notice or they can plan and what they're going to apply for. I think they'd appreciate that. So, but the only written request we've got is the one that Jeff mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question for you, Tracy. So the aid to agency process, that's something that has been happening forever. We have seen requests for COVID-related funding be a little less, I would use the word "involved." Do you, and I don't know how the COVID nonprofit assistance program was, that was a little less involved. Is there a potential that whatever we set up here, that, you know, if we're going to be under your umbrella asking for assistance, that it could be less involved, applications appropriate but a little less involved?
Oh, than the United Way joint funding process?
Yes.
If it's local funding and there's not federal funds involved, yes, we can have a simplified application process.
Okay.
Even with this program, this is federal funds, but I think it's very much simplified compared to CBG funds.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. If it's not CBG, we can simplify it.
Okay, great.
What was the process by which the board of supervisors, you know, Johnson County on the CWJ proposal? They went through some process, I'm assuming.
I'm not aware of their process.
What was that process?
That I don't know.
I think that was just their general ARPA discussion. I mean, they had several meetings on ARPA priorities, and they developed lists of dozens and dozens of projects and went through and voted on this.
I spoke with Supervisor Sullivan earlier today, and in fact, he gave me their process. So, I mean, it was fairly simple in description, more difficult to execute. But they solicited requests, whether it was projects or agencies. They gave them to staff to sort of go through a three-part process. The first is, does this fit the department revenue guidelines? Does it fit the county's strategic plan? And then is this an organization that we've worked with before? And/or is some kind of criteria of, I'm assuming, a sort of trustworthiness or, you know, of, you know, a degree of confidence? Then, those applications, once they kind of got vetted a little bit and through that criteria, then they gave them to the supervisors who sat, and he said it took a very long time, but he talked, they talked it through. And they awarded somewhere above 30, but around about there. So that was, it was a very simple process to vet the things, but then the work was there, so.
I'd spoken with Mayor Foster from Corleville to see what their, excuse me, process was too, and kind of similar to that. And basically, they just received technically some applications. They didn't put a request out for applications, but nonprofit organizations had just applied to them or asked them for some funding, and they talked about their process, which I believe, that's how I would define a process. I would define that this is a process that we're going through right now, discussing it. That's a process, is to talk about it and then make a decision. And that's what they did then during their council meeting, was discuss, weigh the pros and the cons, and which ones to give funds to and how much funds. Of course, they had much, much less than what we have, I think only 6 million versus our 18 million. But that's the process that they went through. And that's what I would say, I mean, we're doing right now, is going through that process of talking about it and deciding, you know, what to do with the funds.
Go ahead.
I mean, it seems to me that in addition to creating a process, that one key, if we're going to differentiate it either among the ARPA funds or between the ARPA funds and normal aid to agencies, is we want, if we want this to be more of a county-wide process, has the organization also gone to other entities within the county and solicited funds, sort of created their own universe, or is this a one-off? And I would be more in favor of looking at organizations that are looking for, that have really tapped into different municipalities as well as the county, so that it really ends up being county-wide.
And that may be a really good marker for how we consider this. I just want to circle back a little bit in terms of, I hear what you're saying, Pauline, about this becoming a process, which it is. However, I think the stringency with which we're not allowed to talk about certain things if they're not on the agenda. And when we're talking about money going out, I do not think that it is necessarily fair for the agency. Hopefully, they tuned in to hear our process and know that there is money available. I think that we absolutely have to make it visible and transparent and communicate it publicly and officially that there is money, you know, that we are entertaining projects or additional operating funds or whatever it might be that they need. But I just, I think that, and it might be that with North Liberty and Corleville, because it was much less money, and that they could do that, and it was less of a concern. I just think that the amount that Iowa City actually has built into their annual budget for supporting direct aid agencies, we have to have a slightly different process than what the others do. And it needs to be open and communicative so that all of the agencies know this. I back what Laura said, which, as much as I admire and also respect the work that is done by, you know, people who, directors who have taken the initiative to say, this is a project that we need, I'm not okay with simply the means being a one-off. And I do take your point also as well, that this has created kind of a universe so that there is a full county kind of and municipality universe. But I think that we need to, there are many other agencies that equally operate in a similar fashion, and we need to afford them the opportunity to weigh in and to apply for these things too.
Right. I don't disagree, but at the same time, I would add that something else that I'm thinking of as a criteria is, a criterion is, is this essentially a one-off or a request? So that it's not because these funds are one-time funds, is this a specific request with a specific end in mind for a specific project that we're not, that, you know, the particular one that we're, that we're skirting around talking about, about CWJ asks for a certain amount for each of five years, but then it ends. So to me, that's another important criterion when we're looking at, when we're, if we're soliciting, if we're soliciting applications or looking at applications, that it be both county-wide and, and finite.
I'm not exactly, oh, please.
I was just going to say, I do respect what Mayor Protem is saying, but to say that these agencies might not have been aware, I mean, we have this list right here, and it was over a year ago when the whole practically world knew we were getting $18 million. And several times over at the senior center, the room was packed full of people who were wanting money and talking about it, and specifically for the aid to workers. But it was a well-known fact, and obviously, we made this list. We set our priorities and said, these are the things that we're going to look at giving funds to. They should have been well-aware. We shouldn't have to hold their hand and go out and one by one say, you know, you know, we've got this list, you should apply. But anyway, that's just my opinion.
As a public announcement that we're open to accepting applications now. We've had a couple of other things that we've had to take care of.
And I also think just some semblance of what kind of program are we talking about? I've had a number of conversations and meetings about the BIPOC business support and what that could look like, and people who are interested, and, you know, it's similar to what Tracy said, of just kind of like, well, we'll have a structure, but we're kind of waiting, it's not figured out yet. And so I do think people know about it, but it's the, at what point they make an ask, and what does the ask look like, that I think we owe them a little more information. I'm interested to know if staff was like freaking out with council talking about specific criteria or, you know, this is not normally our purview. I know ARPA is, I don't mean that we're talking about things not on the agenda. I just mean from a policymaking standpoint, like, are we, normally, we defer to staff or the commissions who are making these decisions to kind of deal with all the specifics? I know ARPA is different. Are we looking to council to do that? Because we need to set some time to hash that out, I think, if that's where we're headed.
Yeah, you know, we've, I think just me personally and probably other staff, and I think some of you have had conversations with other, either nonprofits or for-profits, saying, at what point can I approach the city? My response has always been, we're kind of working through these systematically, right? And we're going through, we went through the direct assistance program, we were going through the Forestview program, we're working on eviction prevention. When we get to the nonprofit piece, we'll have some type of process. I really don't think- I really don't think it's in your best interest to just say, bring us your proposal and we'll discuss them one by one. I think you will be overwhelmed, and you'll be struggling to figure out exactly how to sift through those. It's better to define the process upfront. That said, if you have certain priorities in the community that you want to elevate, you can determine that now, and you've already done that, we've already done that, for example, with Mobile Crisis. We identified from the outset that we wanted to expand Mobile Crisis services in the community. There's only really one agency that provides that service, so we went and we worked with them to do that. If there are other segments of the nonprofit sector that you really think that these ARPA funds are well-designed to lift up and to expand and to create capacity, like we'd have done with Mobile Crisis, you can identify those upfront and then take a one-off proposal. So, the wage theft is a good example. There's really only one agency that I'm aware of that really works on wage theft throughout Johnson County. It's the Center for Worker Justice. We didn't identify that as a top priority back in September with these initial ARPA funds. If you want to go back and say that that's a top priority, then I think that's easier for staff to go back and talk to the other agencies and say, listen, the council made a decision that wage theft was a top priority, and we're going to work with the Center for Worker Justice and the other municipalities in the county to carry out actions to advance our efforts in that area. But I don't think you can just do that through the, for the whole nonprofit sector. I think if you want to take all of those kind of on equal footing, you need to have a process to accept those, and that process can look a number of different ways. We can do that as staff, or you can funnel that through HCDC. You can manage it yourself. You know, you could be the ones to sift through those applications. It's a lot on top of what you're doing, but that could be done as well. So, I would strongly suggest, unless wage theft is that single priority, or you're going to put that above everything else, then you create a process and you invite applications. I think that's going to be the easiest thing for you to manage, and I do think that there are agencies that are patiently waiting for that opportunity, and at least that have approached staff, and we've said, hold off, we're not really considering those things quite yet.
To be clear, I'm not trying to say, I'm definitely not trying to say that we, the council, should make these decisions. I'm saying that I think that elements of a process should include those things, because we're looking, we started out saying that things should be essentially county-wide. So, having someone, organizations apply for things that are county-wide as well as finite funds. But I don't, I don't think that those are, these are decisions that council itself should be making, other than to define priorities.
Yeah, I will just make mention that there are lots of not-for-profit agencies out there that certainly do need assistance, and I know that this council has, you know, traditionally, I mean, we just talked about giving additional funds to, you know, social justice, racial equity grants that weren't funded. And so, there are agencies out there that do great work that we are not aware, that we may not be aware of, that do need some assistance, and so I would, you know, caution us to make sure that we are not, you know, just taking in consideration all of the opportunities that we could give an agency to really continue uplifting some of the work that is benefiting a lot of people, you know, within our community. So, I'm not, you know, totally sold on the, you know, whatever projects have to be county-wide, you know, because then, you know, Iowa City's money is, you know, could be supporting, you know, someone that lives in another city, not to say that, you know, we don't want to do that, but again, I think, you know, the city funds, I really do believe should be more expansive than any project that is just looking at county. I'm not saying that a project couldn't, you know, be looking at the county, but I think if we limit it, that it has to be a county-wide project, then there'd be a lot of not-for-profits that need this assistance that won't be able to get it.
Well, I feel, you know, with the one proposal that I think, you know, is, sort of, we're in a sense indirectly trying to address, I guess you might say, with the CWJ proposal, that, you know, and sort of responding to some of Jeff's comments, you know, was actually something that three other public entities in Johnson County have already identified as what arguably I would say was an emerging need with regard to the ARPA framework, and have already decided that it was something that they were interested in funding. And were the one remaining public entity significant, of significant size and significant funding that would be part of what logically should be framed as a county-wide effort? And as Jeff also noted, in terms of how we would address that need, there is some, to some degree, a sole source aspect to it. I mean, there just are not that many nonprofits who, if we agree that wage theft is a concern and a priority, there just aren't that many nonprofits who would be interested in serving in that capacity. I mean, I would be very interested in, you know, if in any way we can use Johnson County as a model, or adapt their process as a model for justifying such a decision. You know, that's something I'm interested in, but it does seem, we've been kind of caught in a situation where, you know, the 75% of the major entities, public entities in Johnson County have made a decision on this, and in a sense, we're the gap in filling out the process, and, or the framework for the program. And, you know, it's, it seems like it's mostly in place, and that there's a role for us to play in that as well. So, I think there's time in which we can consider what that process will be. Insofar as three other entities have come forward, there is significant funding already in place for that project to initiate. And it's a five-year program, so I think there still is time, if we want to try to identify how we provide that framework, if we feel it's necessary to feel more comfortable making that decision. But I do think there are certain unique aspects about it that separate it from perhaps what we will more generally be addressing in this program.
As Counselor Thomas mentioned, we do, there are other parts of our joint entities, and we just met with them recently, out there, that, and I have confidence in our fellow joint entities that have already decided to support this, that we're talking about, this county and the cities of Corleville and North Liberty, and I salute them for having done that. And if the wish of the rest of the council and staff is that we look at it a little closer, put it on the next agenda, and then actually make the decision so that it's more public, then I'll go along with that. But other entities have already done it, so I think they've made the path for us already.
I do, I at least want to make mention that in April 21st FO packet, there was a submission by CWJ to the council, and so a lot of people are referring to that, and because I think we have to be a little sensitive to how we're talking about this item, because we're including, at a great extent, one specific entity. So, I at least wanted to bring in that there was a submission to council that is related to the April 21st FO packet.
I ask, because it's been a long time since we really talked about it, what was intended under the category workforce development in this, under strategic investments?
We had considered some supplemental apprenticeship programs, as well as childcare programs. Were the two main things.
I have a, oh, go ahead.
Thank you.
A question and a couple of thoughts, but before then, I just wanted to, Councilmember Weiner, you had mentioned you wanted to pause at 5:00 if possible. Did you still want to do that now?
Yeah, I just, which is entirely non-relevant to what we're doing, but there are gatherings at courthouses, county courthouses around the country at 5:00 local time today in order to support reproductive rights, abortion rights, and make a statement. And I just wanted to acknowledge that we cannot be there, but that's happening here.
So, one idea conceptually I had as we talk about this, and we talked a little bit earlier about, you know, we're kind of in a situation, neither fish nor fowl, in terms of it's not really an emergency situation anymore, but we're really looking at wanting to get moving on stuff a little faster than the long-term planning. So I was trying to think of what conceptually could give us a framework to start moving in that direction, and I'm going to throw an idea out there, and does not have to, not married to this or anything, but just to sort of shift that a little bit, that line, maybe like a build-back-better-COVID-recovery nonprofit assistance, with the idea being is, we have an opportunity here to do some stuff. And in this case, talking about the proposal from CWJ. I wasn't on the council back in September, I certainly would have been happy to voice my support for this issue, but in September, I was running on issues of economic justice and wage theft is absolutely one of the things I was talking about in September, but again, not on this council at that time, so. And I could certainly go on, and I could talk about the responsibility of our city to protect people from wage theft. If I'm an employee and I walk into my place of business and I take 500 bucks out of the till and put it in my pocket and walk out, they're going to call the cops, and I'm going to be in handcuffs, and rightly so. If you flip that script and an employer doesn't pay their worker, the worker doesn't have the same sort of ability to have that instant sort of reaction of the justice, because we have this weird structural problem. And so, you know, in that case, the worker's like, well, you can take it to court, which, if you're working, if you're already making, just barely making ends meet, you don't have time to do that, you know, and even know how to navigate that. So we have a great opportunity to join some partners to really protect our citizens, which is what this, which that one proposal comes down to. So that's kind of an issue that I do feel very strongly about, and I do think the city, and I think probably, everybody up here probably agrees with this, so I'm not like, you know, by any means should take any special credit, but I just want to, you know, say, because I wasn't here, that that would be something that's really important. If the mechanism to get there is by doing something where we shift this emergency nonprofit assistance to a COVID recovery nonprofit assistance, or a build-back-better-COVID-recovery, and we can do so with some, you know, some reasonable amount of speed, I think that may be getting us in the right direction. Which then brings me to my question, if the council were to give some clear direction to staff, what would the turnaround time be from like, because, I mean, you've got some stuff in place, but you have to create some new stuff? Any ballpark idea of what that would look like in practice or in application?
It'd be hard to get it on your next agenda. Honestly, we've got our Forest View relocation clinics coming up this week and next week, and that's where a large part of the staff effort's going to be. But we could try to get it on in May. Probably what's most important to the CWJ is that they have a commitment. So even if, even if they knew that, hey, it may take a month, a month and a half to get the actual contract under place, if they felt like that commitment was there, they could probably move forward with some of their plans, would be my guess, but.
You said May, did we, June?
Oh, yeah, June, sorry. Sorry, we're already in May. Time flies. Thank you.
Well, I'm super encouraged to hear that, you know, staff could come back so quickly with a framework for a process, and I also, I agree with Counselor Thomas that this is kind of an easily distinguishable request for the one proposal. So I don't, I would prefer that we try not to create a process with, you know, I think this example is super helpful as we've been talking about it, but I hope that we don't put requirements in place or elevate, you know, for example, already funded by other entities as like a, you know, a necessary sort of step for this, although I do think that maybe putting some weight on the who else is, you know, supporting you is always, or where else can you get funded? Like we heard with the grants that the Human Rights Commission just considered, I think that is important. But I think this particular request is distinguishable and, you know, could be considered somewhat out of turn based on its, the aspects that we've been talking about.
And I agree, I think, based on the idea that we don't know how many other, we've heard some stuff tonight that make me think that some other entities, governmental bodies have already allocated their funds, so if we were to create that as a new criteria, that door may have already closed in other places. Although I agree with the, looking at it as like, hey, this is a good thing that helps with the application, and, as opposed to, if we wanted to get that far into the weeds, so.
Yeah, I think the easiest thing for you to do is not worry so much about the mechanics, but if wage theft is a priority area for you, just make that commitment, make that statement, and allow staff to put together an agreement to bring back to you. That said, I also want to, I also want to let you know that I don't want you to feel like the city's been kind of sitting on our hands when it comes to wage theft. The CWJ did get funding this year through your emerging agency process, and wage theft was the primary component of that application. So I could make the argument that we were well ahead of the other agencies, or the other municipalities, in already funding the effort against wage theft before this additional request came on. That said, if you want to join them in this new partnership that the CWJ outlined, just make it known that that's a priority for this council, and that you want to join your other governmental bodies in doing this. I think this council's expressed a lot of support for working with area governments before. This seems like a good opportunity, if your priorities align, we'll get the agreement together and get it back to you as quickly as we can.
Well, I'll state right now, it shouldn't be any surprise that that will be a priority of mine, the wage theft. I mean, I was shocked to know the extent of it statewide, and I think that we need to take the issue very seriously and make clear that the city has a lack of tolerance for this behavior by employers, that we won't tolerate this in our city, in our community, and surrounding areas. And I just think it's really important that we do make that statement.
Yeah, I think this is a great opportunity for, you know, a unified voice by the major entities of Johnson County, to state that wage theft is a priority. And in looking at the proposal, you know, so as a value statement, and then looking at the proposal, you know, with respect to the costs as proportioned for the various entities, it all seemed to be proportional. So, you know, in that sense, there wasn't anything that jumped out at me in terms of our piece of that overall proposal. It all seemed very reasonable to move forward with it.
We also are looking at our strategic priorities up here on the screen and in front of us, and just three of those in particular fall right into this, and that's, I think, the advanced social justice, racial equity, and human rights. I mean, it's basic human right to be paid what you've earned. Strengthen community engagement and intergovernment relations. Again, we're talking about working with the other entities, the county and the other cities, falls right into that. Promote an inclusive and resilient economy through the city, making sure that these workers are paid what they deserve and what they need so that they can live in this community, because it's over and over again, we hear how expensive it is to live in this community. And I just think that by looking at these things and keeping in mind our strategic priorities, we're putting action to these words that right there on the screen.
So it does appear that, you know, for, that this council wants to treat that as a separate, kind of a item, which is what I'm hearing. And I've seen a lot of not enough hits to kind of direct staff to move forward with the agreement on that. All right, so that's great. And then, if we can come back to kind of the emergency not-for-profit assistance, what we want to do, it sounds like, from what I've been hearing, thank you for your titles, I love them.
Oh, thank you.
Build Back Better COVID Nonprofits and COVID Recovery Nonprofit Assistance. But it does seem to me that we want to direct staff to, you know, I think there was a lot of discussion here with some consensus of, we do want to make sure that we have an application process that is open to the public. We want to be very transparent and communicative about this process. I think it might be helpful to identify, you know, we talked about that range. that range, 500K to 1 million. If we can really, and maybe we don't need to get that done today, I was hoping that we could at least look at one or two other initiatives that we have here and kind of at least start the conversation, even if we didn't finish it. I think affordable housing initiatives, that's pretty important, as well as the BIPOC Business Support Infrastructure. Just from what I've, you know, been hearing and talking with, not only council, but people in the community, if we could, you know, at least touch base on those topics so that we are not kind of behind the, behind it, you know, in the near future.
I very much like the yes and of, and that there has been a way that makes sense for us to join in partnership, as well as not sort of creating this as simply a one-off that doesn't have the logic behind it. So I'm also really glad that there will be sort of a shift so that there can be an open process for other agencies, because I guarantee that DVIP, inside-out, table-to-table, you know, free medical clinic, they all have needs as well. And I think, you know, and we know that. So I'm preaching to the choir, I know that.
And we have funds.
Yeah, exactly. So it's just a matter of starting that process once we get going. So I'm glad that we were able to come to a place that works as a yes and. So I just wanted to throw that.
Will it be, oh, thank, sorry about that. Will it be helpful to, I guess, for the council to really identify the funds, or just, just kind of say to staff, come back? And then we can, you know, because there's this, as we talked about, kind of this urgent, not emergent, need. But, you know, is it gonna be a one-time, you know, like, we're gonna put all of the money in now, and it's, once the application closes, it's done?
Yeah, here's what I would suggest, is you allow us to come back with a, looking at this emergent needs category, allow staff to give you a recommendation on a process. I'd recommend the lower end, the $500,000, because we're already over on two of those other categories. So let's do what we would recommend to you is a process for distribution of up to $500,000 in COVID recovery grants for nonprofits. And you can look at whatever we recommend and tweak it how you see fit, and then we can, we can move forward with that. On the, on the strategic investment, the more the capital side of things, we should probably touch base with the county and the other cities first, and see if there's any interest in the larger needs assessment. If that answers yes, then we can kind of describe what that would look like to you. If it's no, then we probably need to come back and just develop our own process for granting out the larger capital dollars. I think those two things, we can move forward on right away, and hopefully get close to, you know, rolling out the, we could do the grant program, you know, here this summer, for sure. Hopefully sooner rather than later. We've got the COVID recovery program as a model already. So that would be my recommendation. And then, I'll leave it there. If you want to get into those other categories, I can update you on where we are now.
I was seeing a lot of not enough heads for those other two categories. It would be helpful, because when I look at the BIPOC Business Support Infrastructure, that we're, infrastructure in itself lets me know that it's gonna be a huge undertaking. And so I just wanted to maybe at least start the conversation, because if there's some initial legwork that we have to either, you know, refer to a consultant, or someone that we can at least start that process.
Yeah, so that's really been in holding, because we know that AstiG Planning is doing a lot of research right now in the BIPOC business community. And they presented at a couple of your public comment meetings in the last couple of months, just to update you on how they're progressing. We expect them to finalize their report in June or July of this year. And our understanding is there'll probably be a good foundation, not only to support this level of expenditure, but also some helpful recommendations on where it might need, you know, where we might need to focus. So I would recommend just maybe exercising patience for a couple more months, receive that report from AstiG Planning, and then we can craft a strategy based on that report. Doesn't mean you have to follow each of those recommendations, but I think it'll provide some really helpful background to base your decisions on.
Does staff wanna, does council want to wait for that?
I mean, that's really helpful and useful, I think.
Okay, all right.
I think Mayor, just to follow, because I know you've been talking with people in the community too, making, making sure that they're directed to this inclusive economic development planning process to provide input if they have specific ideas, I think is important, since that's still underway.
Yep, that's a good, good point. So affordable housing initiatives.
Yeah, the, the one conversation that we've started is with the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County. We've had some initial conversations with their director about a rental program funded through ARPA. So that would be looking at permanent affordable housing in, on the rental side of things. We have not crafted a proposal yet. We've kind of exchanged some ideas, but candidly, it's been kind of put on the back burner as we've worked through the direct assistance and the Forest View stuff. There is an interest to partner from the Trust Fund of Johnson County. I think they're a natural partner because of their, you know, because of their board makeup and just the reach that they have, the experience that we have with them in stewarding public dollars. So I think we could craft a strong program for affordable housing. It doesn't mean it has to take up the entire amount of funding in this category, but I think initially, what staff had in mind was about a million-dollar pool of funds, maybe million, million and a half, somewhere in that range. We have to kind of cost out some, some projects, if you will, to know what would provide a meaningful amount for them. But then empowering them and the staff there and the board to really leverage those funds with all the other funding sources that they kind of are at the intersection of, and create some permanent affordable housing in the rental sector.
I do want to just get council thoughts on that partnership. Does that, are there any other partnerships that, or initiatives that council is thinking about for affordable housing initiatives?
I mean, just to make sure I understand, Jeff, that this would be in addition to our, like, we have our million dollars every year, and I think, is it 75% of that, 50% goes to the Housing Trust Fund?
Seventy-five percent.
Thank you. So $750,000 annually goes to this, these pooled funds that are then leveraged with private dollars and other, other funding sources to create larger projects. So this would be a big infusion into that same pool, is that right?
Correct. We may have some, we may look to put some additional strings on that to direct it in a certain way. So for example, if we really wanted to target it towards rental housing, we would put those additional strings, kind of like you do now. The $750,000 that you provide now, 250,000 of that has Lytech strings attached. We've said, we'd like these 250 to be reserved for Lytech projects. We could do the same with the ARPA funds. That's the type of discussions we're having with Ellen right now.
And then, the Housing, Affordable Housing Committee that was meeting, we're still waiting for that presentation.
There was a big, there was a big document in our.
Right.
So you could look to that report to create additional initiatives as well.
Right. And so, that's why I wanted to just talk about, are there other initiatives that we wanted, and maybe we probably should have that discussion a little later, just to go through that.
I think you're gonna want a full work session to consider that plan.
I would think that would be really useful. Because right now, they're talking about using, we have the range here is from, at least that we see here is from 2.5 million to 6 million. That's a big piece, but 1 million is, whether it's the low end or the high one, 1 million is still a relatively small part of that. So there's plenty of.
So we'll get an affordable housing work session going. Anything else that we maybe want to just touch base on? Within the ARPA. I mean, it's all fair game to talk about.
The, do we, where do we stand, if anywhere, on the climate resiliency piece of it? Is that something that the Climate Commission is looking at, or others are giving input on?
Now, yeah, back last year, when we were developing this framework, we had some conversations with the Iowa Flood Center about what a partnership may look like. They actually assist cities across the country with resiliency planning. And so they certainly have the expertise to take some of our resiliency planning to the next level. They can do some phenomenal modeling that may help us make infrastructure decisions in the future, for example. But we really haven't picked up those conversations from last summer. So that would be, that would be staff's next step on that. It's just not one that we've, we've gotten to.
If we haven't yet, I think it would be wonderful for our, you know, our climate staff to be, just ask that question of if there's another, if there was a million dollars here, you know, just for kind of like, what's on our list, or what are ideas, things that we know, we could prioritize if we had more funds. I'd be interested in that input.
Yep, okay.
As from the commission.
I know that individuals that may own their own property could come to the city to get loans and that type of stuff. There could be a climate action initiative that is attached there, whether they're coming here for loans or not. But maybe just some, if people are changing some stuff at their house, maybe there's an opportunity for there to be some funding to get more climate actionable items.
I think that's an excellent idea, Mayor, especially since, you know, we're coming up on, you know, by 2030, we have to reduce our amounts by so much. And I think anything we can do to help the private residents, especially, to do what they can as far as insulation, or new windows, or whatever it might be, solar panels, I think, I think that's an excellent idea.
And I know for businesses, Wendy Ford has been, you know, with some of these zones, there's been opportunities there, and maybe just working with some staff about what, what might be some possibilities.
Yeah, our staff is, we have a couple of programs to date. So what we've done is we've looked at our existing programs for residential rehab, for example. South District Program would be another example. And we've layered climate funds on top of those funds to kind of take our efforts to the next level. But our staff, our climate staff is working on, conceptually, what a residential kind of energy efficient rebate program would look like. So a lot of those things are pretty far along, and stay tuned, and they'll be there, yeah.
That could be really, that could be really forward-looking and exciting. I mean, one of the things that people don't often think about is replacing your furnace, or getting, or changing a gas furnace to an electric furnace, because that greatly reduces the carbon footprint, but it's not cheap.
Are there any other items that we want to talk about right now from the ARPA funds?
I'd actually like to bring up the workforce development pot, simply because Jeff had mentioned that childcare would be one of the initiatives that could potentially be, or some initiatives could be taken sort of in part with that. And there, to my way of thinking, there's a lot of interesting things that are already in the works. So we would not have to tax staff to come up with something. It's merely a matter of being able to tap in and support programs that are going on. So I know that there's, actually Janice is on the Iowa City Task Force, you were on it as well. Since that time, it's taken more shape through a lot of work that's been done in connection with the county. But then also, Jennifer Banta was part of the Governor's Task Force Coalition. And so, really has a nice sense of sort of different ways in which we could potentially be able to support some initiatives that are going on, that actually also tap into some of the other priorities that we have, especially BIPOC and immigrant populations. And so, that's just something I want to continue to put on people's radars, because these are things that we could actually end up supporting as they are getting off the ground. And it would be fairly easy for us to do.
Right, and one could even be sort of working with them and with the school district.
Absolutely, right, because as we've heard from joint entities.
Helping provide wraparound care for pre-K and so forth.
Yeah.
I wonder if we could, you know, since this is already an existing group that's meeting, if we can kind of direct staff to have some conversations and find maybe what some of the needs are. As I heard you, you know, just talking, one of the things that came to me is the work of four Cs, and what they do with in-home providers. I know that there's needs out there. There's need for more providers. There's needs with the current providers. And I think that, you know, that could be an opportunity as well, that we could kind of navigate. But just wondering if we, we're not trying to put too much on staff, but as they're in, you know, various places, maybe there could be some conversations just starting with these existing programs.
Maybe coordinating that with our anticipated childcare discussion at work session that we're having, we're talking about having. I don't know when, when that may occur, but it seems to me that.
Sure. Yeah, I think it could kind of all fit together, actually. Okay, great. I'm seeing majority. Great, all right. Anything else right here?
We've bitten off, bitten off a lot.
All right, we're gonna go to the next item, which is gonna be clarification of agenda items.
Forgive me, on process, is this where we note if we want to pull out something from consent?
Yes.
I just want to pull out the USG appointment, and just to be able to welcome the appointments of the new graduate student, or the new student representatives.
And what we'll do is during our, well, one, super excited for this opportunity, so yes. And I think what we'll do is during our comment, we'll just have, council can talk about it during comment. Yeah, so we, yeah, so, yeah, so we won't actually pull it out separate, but there will be a great opportunity to discuss it.
The other item on there that I wanted, that I thought we could also comment on is the, is the Energy Efficiency Grant, because that's really, that's a real plus for the community and the Lozanskis' commitment to.
All right, InfoPakit discussion, April 21st. We will talk about the council listening post. That's gonna take place at the Workforce Public Works Open House on May 21st. Maybe we'll start there. Any interest in being a part?
Sure. I've not done one, so.
Okay. I can go at any point. So if someone hasn't done one, be my guest.
Yep, I can do it.
Okay. And, yep. I'm gonna be there already, but I don't know what my role is while I'm there, by the way. I can be the third if, I'll be the third. All right, so there we have it. Any other items from InfoPakit, April 21st? And we did talk about the CWJ, and that's great for that opportunity. Yes.
So it's okay, with respect to the, the electric bus bash, with like, is it looking like it's gonna end up over here in the?
Yeah, Darian's nodding her head. It's probably across the street. We'll formally announce that later in the week.
Yes. It'll still be exciting.
Absolutely.
Will it fit? That's the question.
I saw the bus across the way from my office today, so I think they were testing that very notionally.
All right. InfoPakit, April 28th. If, oh, go ahead.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, just a, just a quick thank you to the people that put together the Affordable Housing Action Plan. You know, our city staff and the different the Affordable Housing Action Plan, you know, our city staff and the different organizations that teamed up on that. I've made it about two-thirds of the way through it now, and it is an amazing document. And clearly, a lot of thought and effort and hard work went into that. And I can definitely see that this is going to be a huge help to us as we start to make decisions about how we deal with affordable housing in our community. So for those of you that are here or are listening, thank you for the hard work on that. So it definitely shows.
My assumption is that after our strategic plan, we'll probably have that somewhere on one of the work sessions.
I just wanted to draw attention to IP-6 in the Packet from the 28th, which is the Direct Assistance Program from the Johnson County being launched. So that is live on their website, and I know they're having a number of clinics to promote that and to help people sign up. There is no fee to apply, but of course, it's not guaranteed that you will receive funds if you do apply. So just to encourage people to submit their applications.
It's a great opportunity. All right, any other items from April 28th? And we're going to bring up our University of Iowa Student Government with their updates. And welcome, welcome, welcome.
Hi, Council. So first off, there will be rooms during our lease gap weeks in the IMU House Hotel that will cost students only $25 a night rather than initially expected $30, with an option to also pay an extra $10 for parking in the IMU ramp. All of this information is posted on the Off-Campus Living website. Last Tuesday, the Women's Resource and Action Center hosted the Take Back the Night March in solidarity with survivors of sexual violence. 200 protesters were in attendance advocating for the rights of the 1,000, nearly 2,000 victims between 2015 and 2019 who only saw a 4% chance of seeing their cases fully processed. Additionally, the sapling of a tree outside of Anne Frank's window was planted on the Pennacrest this past Friday. And our Sustainability Committee is planning on bringing back the farmer's market vouchers this summer in order to encourage students to continue to buy local.
And then with the recent announcement, as you all heard this morning, with Roe versus Wade in the Supreme Court, it threatens the safety, the health and safety of Iowa City students and community members. So multiple protests are happening on the Pennacrest Saturday and Sunday around 1:00 p.m. So all council members are invited to attend that. The Renters Guys Survey has just been released for University of Iowa students to fill out. So we'll include a link for that for you guys to share around. And then all of the magnets that we partnered with have been distributed, so that's really exciting. They're just kind of sprinkled all around Iowa City. So if you go take a walk around or any of the university buildings, you're likely to see one, so it's pretty cool. And then lastly, since this is my last city council meeting, I just wanted to like say thank you to every one of you, and it's been such an honor serving as city liaison. Even the city staff, you guys have been a real help with us, working with projects that Ellie and I are passionate about, so that's been really cool. Just meeting you guys at the city council meeting, like some of you at the city council meeting, just in the fall, time has flown by super fast. And it's been really challenging, but also rewarding to work on like such a large range of issues. Ellie and I have done stuff such as supporting students with off-campus renting through magnets in a lease gap week program, to encouraging sustainable best practices by supporting the Iowa Environmental Council with their Zero Carbon Goal for Iowa City, and also hosting bike events on campus. So it's been really fun working on a large range of issues that Ellie and I are passionate about. And I'm really excited to see what Ellie and Keaton are going to do. Excited for you guys to meet the next city liaison and continue the work that they have done so far. So thank you for everything, and feel free to reach out to me for anything in the future, so.
Well, to both of you, on behalf of the council, we really, one, congratulate you, Ellie, to now being the city council liaison, and we look forward to working with Keaton as well. And Anna, the city would like to present the certificate of appreciation to you for the thoughtful contributions during the 2021 through 2022 year of service as the city council liaison from the University of Iowa, undergraduate student government, and for demonstrating commitment to student participation on this third day of May 2022. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council.
I know I, for one, look forward to reading the news story about you getting elected to a city council someday, so we'll be watching for that. So thank you, thank you for your leadership.
All right, all right, council updates.
Well, it was an enormous honor to represent, to be sort of dual-hatted as both the city and the synagogue to represent at the Anne Frank Sapling Planting last Friday. It was incredibly, the whole program was incredibly moving and really sort of pushed everybody's thinking into the future and out to the entire community.
And thank you for doing that. I've heard nothing but great things about that event, and I was unfortunately not able to attend. But thank you for representing this council and the city of Iowa City. All right, any other updates?
So I was able to represent the city at the Cedar Rapids, no, at the CID, they keep using that as the abbreviation, but at the Eastern Iowa Airport. It was their 75th anniversary, and it was amazing to hear about the history of it as well as then to hear the plans for the future. They have been able, in spite of COVID, to have a phased approach towards updating and looking forward and really understanding the needs of how airport travel and usage needs to change along with the way that patterns since COVID have sort of seemingly permanently marked the way that people use travel. So it was just fascinating, and then they had two sort of logistical consultants come in who knew that was a thing, but they were amazing and fascinating, and it just really was remarkable. They actually have great faith in the strength of the airport, and they said that this is incredibly rare. So this is a really great collaboration in the corridor between North and South. And it was just fascinating, and they were very pleased that Iowa City was there.
Awesome. Any other updates for boards, commissions, and committees? Awesome, we are adjourned until 6:00 and not 7:00 p.m.
Okay. Where's, uh... What's his name? You know, he's been showing up. I don't see him. All right. Look like we're gonna get started. I'm gonna call the meeting to order for the City of Iowa City. Formal meeting for May 3rd, 2022. I wanna welcome everyone to City Hall, and I'm gonna start. Roll call, please.
Alter?
Here.
Burgess?
Here.
Farmson?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Weiner?
Here.
All right. Again, welcome to your City Hall. Happy to see you all in person and actually in the City Hall. We had been over in the senior center for a long, long time. And to everyone virtually, welcome to you as well. And first item is going to be proclamations, item two. And two A is gonna be the Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and Asian American and Pacific Islander Day Against Bullying. Whereas Asian Pacific American Heritage Month was first proposed as a commemorative week by Representative Frank Horton of New York, and signed into law by President Jimmy Carter, with the week's first recognition being in 1979, but was amended to its present form of an annual celebratory month in 1992. And whereas the term Asian Pacific is very broad and includes many peoples and cultures from the entire Asian continent to the Pacific Island groups of Micronesia, Melanesia, and Polynesia, and thus encompasses diverse populations within one group destination. And whereas the contributions Americans of Asian and Pacific Island heritage have made to this society are too many and varied to list comprehensively. And whereas the API community is the fastest growing racial group in America, and today is an important moment to recognize not only our long-term communities, but also our newcomers. Asian Pacific Americans have made contributions ranging from building connections to the rest of the US, whether transcontinental railroad to service with valor in our armed forces, to the fields of agriculture, business, education, health, and technology. And whereas the API community has marked by a struggle for freedom, equality, and justice prevailing over the adversity of exclusion, persecution, incarceration, and disparities. And whereas May 18th is the birthday of Vincent Chin, who was brutally murdered in a hate crime in 1982. His murder futile National Asian American activist moment that continues to this day. And whereas we have seen a staggering rise in bullying, discrimination, and hate crimes against the Asian American and Pacific Islander community during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas in honor of Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and Vincent Chin's birthday, May 18th shall be an API Day Against Bullying and Hate. And whereas Act to Change is a national nonprofit dedicated to fighting bullying in the Asian American and Pacific Islander community. To find resources, visit acttochange.org. And now, therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 to be Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 18th to be Asian American and Pacific Islander Day Against Bullying. In Iowa City, and urge all community members to join Act to Change. The City of Iowa City is committed to this important issue and encourages the public to foster dialogue, share resources, and learn more about what they can do to fight bullying. And to receive this proclamation is Human Rights Commissioner Mark Priest. Welcome. And I'm gonna give you this proclamation.
So Mayor Teague and councilors, on behalf of the residents of Iowa City and the Iowa City Human Rights Commission and staff, we're grateful for this proclamation of this May as Asian Pacific Heritage Month, and Wednesday, May 18th as Asian American and Pacific Islander Day Against Bullying. As a diverse Iowa community, residents of Iowa City have the privilege to become culturally aware and empathetic toward our minority residents. We can be allies for each other and then come such times as these when we must increase our ability and willingness to be advocates for minority residents and new residents of Iowa City. And now, because of racist rhetoric from leaders, our Asian American and Pacific Islander neighbors welcome proclamations just such as this one that are beyond rhetoric and inspire attention, advocacy, and change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 2B is Bicycle Month and Bike to Work Week. And this will be read by Councilor Burgess.
Whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, and environmentally sound form of transportation, recreation, and enjoyment. And whereas increasing bicycle access and safety enables residents of Iowa City, including young people, to participate more fully in the educational, social, and economic life of our community. And whereas the metro area bicycle network, including our off-street trail system, now attracts bicycle tourism and economic development that helps to support and sustain local businesses. And whereas throughout the month of May, residents of Iowa City can experience the joys of bicycling by participating in educational programs, rides, commuting events, charity events, or by simply going for a ride. And whereas these activities create greater public awareness of rights and responsibilities of bicyclists to improve safety for all. Now, therefore, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, I do hereby proclaim May 2022 to be Bicycle Month, and May 16th to 22nd as Bike to Work Week in Iowa City, and urge all residents who are able to join in this observance by bicycling for fitness, recreation, or to commute to work. Further, I ask all motorists to drive safely and with full attention to the road by putting away electronic devices, obeying all traffic signs, signals, and speed limits, sharing the road by allowing no less than five feet of separation when passing a cyclist, or taking to the adjacent lane to pass on roads with speed limits over 25 miles per hour, and yielding to bicyclists and pedestrians as required by law. And to accept this proclamation is Aria Saviti from Bike Iowa City.
All right. Thanks, Mayor. I actually came with a nice speech, but Councilor Taylor there really, I think, project my speech. It was what forward, what I wanted to say. For me, biking started a journey to better my health. Over the last seven years, I found out that, you know, I could see more of the community, the economics of biking, going to different towns, from Iowa City to North Liberty. The accessibility has greatly increased. As you pointed out, driving distracted is a big danger to cyclists. So seeing more pathways for cyclists to actually get to these different parts of town has been really a godsend to us. So we wanna thank you very much for all the continued infrastructure involvement that you've been doing and development across all cities, between here, Iowa City, Solon, and North Liberty. So thank you very much for all the hard work you're doing on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 2C is Jewish American Heritage Month, and this will be read by Councilor Weiner.
Whereas the Jewish American experience, as President Biden so aptly proclaimed last year, quote, "is a story of faith, fortitude, and progress." It is a quintessential American experience, one that is connected to key tenets of American identity, including our nation's commitment to freedom of religion and conscience. This month, we honor Jewish Americans, past and present, who have inextricably woven their experience and their accomplishments into the fabric of our national identity. Generations of Jewish people have come to this nation fleeing oppression, discrimination, and persecution in search of a better life for themselves and their children. These Jewish Americans have created lives for themselves and their families and played indispensable roles in our nation's civic and community life, making invaluable contributions to our nation through their leadership and achievements, close quote. And whereas equal opportunity for all, regardless of age, color, creed, disability, familial status, gender identity, marital status, national origin, presence or absence of dependents, public assistance, source of income, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation is a fundamental goal of our city. And whereas we recognize the historic accomplishments of Jewish Americans, such as Moses Bloom, the mayor of Iowa City from 1873 to 1875, and the first Jewish mayor of an American city; Libby Hyman of Des Moines, author of the 1919 volume "A Laboratory Manual for Elementary Zoology"; Philip Roth, American novelist taught at the University of Iowa's Writers Workshop in 1960; and whereas, as the president further proclaimed, quote, "Alongside this narrative of achievement and opportunity, there is also a history of racism, bigotry, and other forms of injustice." This includes the scourge of antisemitism. In recent years, Jewish Americans have increasingly been the target of white nationalism and antisemitic violence it fuels. As our nation strives to heal these wounds and overcome these challenges, let us acknowledge and celebrate the crucial contributions the Jewish Americans have made to our collective struggle for a more just and fair society. Leading movements for social justice, working to ensure that the opportunities they have secured are extended to others, and heeding the words of the Torah, "Justice, justice shall you pursue." We honor Jewish Americans who, inspired by Jewish values and American ideals, have engaged in the ongoing work of forming a more perfect union, close quote. Now, therefore, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, I do hereby proclaim May 2022 to be Jewish American Heritage Month. And accepting this proclamation is Mark Priest, Human Rights Commissioner.
Councilor Weiner, Mayor Teague, all councilors, on behalf of the residents of Iowa City and the Iowa City Human Rights Commission and staff, we're grateful for this proclamation of May 2022 being designated Jewish American Heritage Month in Iowa City. The planting of the Anne Frank chestnut tree at the Pinnacle just this past Friday, the day after Rosh Hashanah, insists and inspires us all the more to dedicate our lives as a whole community to Anne Frank's a whole community to Anne Frank's vision of what can be. At the planting of the chestnut tree, Counselor Weiner recalled Anne's naming in her journal, "What Could Be," quoting, "When I look up at the sky, I somehow feel that everything will change for the better, that this cruelty too will end, that peace and tranquility will return once more," end of quote. Years ago, Leslie and I took our children to the Secret Annex. We went up the steep stairs hidden by the bookcase, visiting the rooms and especially looking out the window through the chestnut tree to see the facade of the Western torn. In the distant, in the distance, just brought chills to us, this facade of what we would know as Westerkerk. This established Christian institution in Amsterdam is a symbol for me of what mindless religion tolerates while the horror of Holocaust fell upon Jewish residents in the Netherlands. Anne wrote about the Westerkerk five days into her stay at the Annex. Daddy, mommy, and Margot can't get used to the sound of the Westerkerk clock yet, which tells us the time every quarter of an hour. I can. I love it from the start, and especially in the night, it's like a faithful friend. Jewish American Heritage Month brings our whole city an opportunity to give thanks for the blessings of the Jewish community in Iowa City, for Agudas Akim Synagogue, more than 100 years old, and to renew our mutual efforts to name and protect the human rights of every citizen, each of us faithful friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 2D is National Public Works Week. Whereas public works professionals of the Iowa City Public Works Department focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital, important to a sustainable and resilient community, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the City of Iowa City. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of our public works professionals, who are responsible for maintaining, improving, and protecting our transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our community members. And whereas it is in the public's interest for the community members and civic leaders to gain knowledge of and maintain a progressive interest in understanding the importance of public works and public works programs in Iowa City. And whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And whereas the 2022 National Public Works Week theme is ready and resilient, this theme highlights the ability of the public works professionals to perform regular public work duties and be ready at a moment's notice to react as first responders during natural disasters and overcoming challenges seen in the field. Now, therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th to May 21st, 2022, to be National Public Works Week in Iowa City and urge all community members and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved and provide in our public works and to recognize the substantial contributions which public works professionals make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of care, quality of life. And to receive this is our Public Works Director, Ron Kanoki.
On behalf of the 166 public works professionals in the Iowa City Public Works Department, I would like to thank you for the National Public Works Week proclamation. The dedicated professionals who work in our engineering, equipment, resource management, streets, wastewater, and water divisions exemplify this year's theme, "Ready and Resilient." Whether we are providing the everyday services made more challenging by COVID or responding to extreme weather events, the Public Works Department is ready and here to serve our community. I would like to thank you for your support of our operations. Last year, I reported the Public Works Facility Phase One Project was recognized by the American Public Works Association as the Public Works Project of the Year in the Structures category for 2021. This year, this project has been recognized by the American Institute of Architects Committee on Environment with one of the 2022 COTI Top 10 Awards. We look forward to Saturday, May 21st, when we will have the opportunity to showcase this building with an open house. We invite all community members to stop by between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. The city will have vehicles from its fleet on display with a Touch a Truck event. You'll have the ability to learn more about the services the city provides, as well as tours of the new building and the fire training tower. We will also have indoor roller skating, live music, food vendors, and a quilt show in partnership with the Old Capitol Quilters Guild. The quilt show has been titled Beauties Amongst the Beasts. The Summer of the Arts will host a free screening of The Field of Dreams at the Napoleon Park at sunset. The Public Works Open House will be held during National Public Works Week on Saturday, May 21st, at 3810 Napoleon Lane, between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, and parking for the event will be available at the Napoleon Park softball complex. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to, could I get a motion to approve our consent calendar, which is items three through seven?
Sound moved. Second.
All right. And would anyone from the public like to address any item on our consent agenda? If you are present, we ask that you come forth. There are sign-in sheets that you can sign in at the podium. There are also stickers at the back that you can place in the basket at the podium. And we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less, and we're going to welcome you today.
Hello, my name is Brandon Ross. I'm Iowa City resident, U.S. citizen. Listening to all the intros about Asian American Day and bicycles and such, I mean, none of this will be possible. You know, Summer of the Arts, all things that we appreciate, Jewish, the special Jewish Day. If we engage in nuclear war, the United States with Russia. My mom's family was Jewish, from Kiev, and also from cities.
Hey, Brandon.
Yeah.
So this is the consent agenda.
Oh, okay.
But if you want to come back up during.
Oh, I didn't understand. I thought when you said anything that was not on the agenda.
Yeah.
Well, that was, that was quite a mishap for me.
I'm sorry.
I feel like Mayor Bloom, who only got two years.
I must, I must have misspoke. Sorry about that.
No, no, you didn't. I just, I think it's the masks.
All right.
Sorry.
So anything on the consent agenda? Anyone want to address this? CNN01, council discussion?
I simply want to congratulate and thank Ellie Meglin for her recent appointment as our liaison, our student liaison. And Keaton Zymet is the alternate, and I look forward to meeting and liaising and getting to know better. And finally, I just want to thank Anna for her service. I feel like our future is very strong with what you guys bring to the table, and I'm just really excited and say thank you for the service that Anna has already provided.
You're here. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to note on about item 6D, just call people's attention to the approving a commercial energy efficiency improvement grant agreement between the Lanzinsky Corporation and the City of Iowa City. It just really allows, this is the type of grant that really allows for energy efficiency upgrades to important buildings.
Roll call, please. Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague? Yes. Motion passed at seven to zero. Now we're at item number eight, which is the consent agenda.
Community comment.
Oh. I am, sorry about that. We are at community comment. I must have said the wrong thing. All right. We are at community comment, and this is for any item that is not on our agenda, where the public can come up and share at this time.
Thanks.
Welcome again, Brandon.
Brandon Ross. Oh, wow. All right. So I was just about to say that I have family from Poland and from Ukraine. I have noticed that there are signs up in Iowa City with Iowa City's logo, UNESCO City, please support Ukraine. I feel this is a very polar situation right now. Ukraine's been in civil war for eight years. U.S. and NATO sent weapons into Ukraine. Right-wing national factions, fascist neo-Nazis, did get a hold of those weapons. I do believe that Russia intervened in the way that the U.S. intervened during the Cuban Missile Crisis. I do believe that there are spheres of influence, especially considering nuclear weapons. When Khrushchev sent weapons over to Cuba, because Cuba was a sovereign state, the U.S. was bothering with military and regime change operations such as Bay of Pigs. The U.S. came back with the threat of nuclear warfare, and they had a stalemate. Now, in this situation, Russia's border country, which is Ukraine, has had, has had a civil war going on for eight years. There have been three leaders in Ukraine, Yanukovych, Poroshenko, and Zelensky. And despite that, Zelensky wants weapons, and we keep sending him weapons, and Nancy Pelosi promises weapons, and we just spent $33 billion on weaponry to send to Ukraine. I believe this is the wrong position. It is the wrong position for NATO to be involved in Ukraine. Many people have said this before, including Stephen F. Cohen, the historian of Russian, the Russian historian, as well as John Mearsheimer, Russian historian, as well as Henry Kissinger, who said that we should not never be in Ukraine, it is a neutral state. People in Ukraine are dying. They do not care whether the bombs come from the left or the right. They do not care. A third of the country is Russian, culturally Russian, pro-Russian. A third of the country is right-wing. It's a very complex situation. So when I see the flags on people's houses with Ukraine flags or buttons or things like this, I think they are fetishes and they are appalling. So my suggestion is that people, if you really want to help Ukraine, all those niceties are not going to help Ukraine. More weapons are not going to help Ukraine. Please, please, call or write or both, your senators, your congresspeople, the White House, and please appeal to Joe Biden and your senators and congresspeople to please withdraw weapons, withdraw NATO, and negotiate, negotiate, negotiate. The goal is détente. We can talk here all night long about all these different issues that we're interested in, but if we get in nuclear war with Ukraine, with Russia, it's over. So I want to say that also Russia, for Jewish people, is a safer place than Ukraine, and I have friends there.
Thank you.
So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address during this time? Welcome. And we'll ask that people give their, their name and the city they're from or, and their, yes, welcome.
Okay, hi. My name is Mazahar Saleh. I'm the director of the Center for Worker Justice. This is my name. Today, we just have a quick presentation about wage theft. And I will start, how you do this slideshow, right? Yeah. Okay, wage theft. Yeah, I guess I want to talk to you a little bit about the Center for Worker Justice. Most of you know what we do, but for the public, we just empower low-wage workers to identify an issue in the community and start organizing around them. We have many victories during our, by the way, this is our 10 anniversary will be on September. So during these 10 years, we, one of the victories that we have, we created the first community ID in the Midwest, Johnson County Community ID, where a lot of people now using it and keep this community safe. We increased the minimum wage to 1010, and you know what happened? Des Moines just, you know, decided to take that opportunity from the county, but the still Center for Worker Justice did not stay silent. We reached out to a lot of businesses in the area, and they committed to pay 1010 as a minimum. So, so far, we registered 165 businesses committed voluntarily to keep paying 1010 as a minimum. And also, we do some kind of English classes, know your right training, and all this kind of training. One of our unique projects during the pandemic, we created this program called From My Home to Yours, where we receive a lot of donation from, you know, the caring community member, where they donate their stimulus check. And also, we receive some fund from the City of Iowa City County, Johnson County, and so far, we help over 700 family by giving them between $300 to $600. So also, we help like people applying for the state programs during COVID. And we, the Center for Worker Justice has recovered more than 170,000 in unpaid wages. Eighty percent of that theft case were in Iowa City, whether the people live in Iowa City or the business in Iowa City. So wage theft could be, why, what's wage theft? Wage theft, it could be just basically you work somewhere, never get paid, or you're misclassified as independent contractor, where you work hourly, or stealing tips, or like working off the clock, like many, many kind of, you know, wage theft cases. And I think I'm going to turn it to, I still have 50 seconds. Okay, we are, what we do, we don't like to really just highlight the business as a bad business. Our goal is to recover wages. So the first step we do, we gather the information, give the employer a call, and after that, it's work, that's fine. Otherwise, we will escalate it by sending a delegation, and some of you went in a delegation before, so to demand that employer to pay. If it's work, okay, otherwise, we escalate it. We will do it as a request from the employees, we escalate it to do a protest, and also at the same time filing a complaint with the Department of Labor, and also do like press release and like bringing the media and just make it like a public issue. I'm going to turn it to Kelly to give you some example.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I am Kaylee Simmons. I'm a community organizer at the Center for Worker Justice. So I'm going to walk you through some examples of cases that we've seen in Iowa City. This one was recovered at the beginning of 2022, so these two individuals were married, and they had previously worked at the bar that was there before. And so this new bar wanted to keep these old employees, so they offered to pay both of them at a rate of $25 an hour, but they were supposed to clock in through the alarm system when they walked in the door, but half the time that alarm system wasn't working, so there was sort of a miscommunication here, and they only ended up getting, one of them got a check for 290 something dollars. So they came to us, and we delivered a letter, and we got in touch with the CEO of this bar, and we were able to sit down and help them recover $423.32 each. This was a case at Taco Loco in Iowa City. Again, a married couple, they were working here, they were paid in cash, and then they stopped receiving pay altogether. When they came to CWJ, we also realized that they were not getting paid overtime, so we held a delegation to deliver our letter, and we ended up recovering $1,257.91 for Sophia and $1,182.13 for Francisco. Rita Sondres, this is a case that is pretty public right now. Rita was not properly being paid overtime for 13 years of her employment. She was only getting paid half-time or regular time instead of time and a half. So we've held numerous delegations, I think two or three delegations, to deliver a letter to the employer stating that we'd like to discuss this issue, and he was working with us at the beginning, but unfortunately, those negotiations kind of died down. So Rita wanted to escalate the situation. We held a protest, and we are currently in the middle of negotiations. We had a meeting on Monday, we'll have a meeting on Friday about this, and hopefully we can recover some overtime wages for her. Henry Torres, he works in construction. We've been seeing a lot more of wage theft cases from construction. He was subcontracted by a contractor to do roofing and siding, and he had been paid up until November for every job he completed, and then all of a sudden, the payment stopped coming in. So we held a delegation, and we met with the employer, and he is working on payments towards $12,500 of unpaid wages. And Santos was misclassified as an independent contractor. He's promised a wage of $27 an hour. After that, they reduced his pay by $2 an hour and refused insurance benefits because he was an independent contractor. And so CWJ held a delegation, we helped him recover $1,109.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Greg Hearn. I'm president of Iowa City Federation of Labor, also vice president for CWJ. I just want to read something here real quick. I try not to be too redundant and cover some of the same things that Ma'zah here said. But every year, far too many Iowans experience wage theft. When they are cheated out of wages they have earned, some are not paid for all of the hours they actually worked, some are paid off the books at less than the legal mandated minimum wage. Some earn tips that they do not get to keep, some are not paid at the legal mandated rate for overtime, some leave a job or contract arrangement and never receive their final paycheck. Annually, wage theft deprives low-wage Iowa workers of an estimated $600 million. It deprives state and local governments of revenue and puts law-abiding businesses at a competitive disadvantage. And by the way, this report was put out in August of 2012 by the Iowa Policy Project. So low-wage Iowa workers miss out on an estimated $600 million in wages each year. Wage theft may be costing the state at least $45 million annually in unpaid tax revenue, plus another $14 million in lost revenue to the state's unemployment fund. Iowa's enforcement of wage and hour laws lag far behind national and regional peers. Iowa enjoys just a single investigator to enforce the law for 1.2 million private sector workers. Wage theft disproportionately affects workers in certain sectors of Iowa economy, including restaurants, construction, small businesses, and the meatpacking and food processing industry. Wage theft has a disproportionate impact on Iowa's growing low-wage workforce and on immigrant workers. I spent 40 years in organized labor, and until this report came out in 2012, I wasn't familiar at all with the term wage theft, because in organized labor, you very seldom see wage theft. If someone is short on their paycheck because of overtime or something like that, we have a grievance process that we can go through or take it all the way to arbitration. If you're not part of a collective bargaining agreement, you don't have those resources. So that's why so many people are reaching out to the Center for Workers Justice for help. Center for Workers Justice have helped people from as far north as Waterloo and far south as the city of Davenport. So it shows that we're covering a lot of ground, and we're making a lot of difference. It's no wonder that people who engage in wage theft don't want employees organizing. Being the only organization that fights wage theft, CWJ has fought for workers from far north of Waterloo and south of Davenport. Like I said, a few years ago, we were able to raise the minimum wage in Iowa City and surrounding communities. It was because our community worked side by side with our elected officials that we were successful, when national lawmakers of the Moines was not willing to do so. Time in... Okay, that's good. Thanks for offering time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Shel Stromquist. I'm a resident of Iowa City, and I'm an ally of the... Community ally of the Center for Worker Justice, and also chair of the Finance Committee of the Center. I just want to make a few quick points, complementing what you've already heard. We have every indication that wage theft is not just a longstanding problem, but it's a deepening problem, and it's been deepened by the impact of the pandemic, as has so many things. The kind of industries we have in Iowa City, the construction and leisure industries in particular, and restaurants and so forth, are chronic, you know, industries that have high levels of wage theft. And so I think it's particularly incumbent upon us as a community to begin to try to address this in a systematic and concerted way. And what we're seeing is the tip of the iceberg. We know from our encounters with people who have experienced wage theft how fearful they are to come forward. These are low-wage workers, many of them immigrants, many of them fearful to make claims for the wages they have actually earned. And so we feel it's particularly important now to step forward and in a sustained and concerted way to address this problem as a community. And the Center for Worker Justice has a strong track record. As you've seen, these ARPA funds are not regular budgeted funds. These are special funds designed to address particular concerns and constraints that have developed in the pandemic. And so we urge you to support the proposal that we've put forward to you, to North Liberty, to the city of Coralville, and to Johnson County, and the others have all indicated their willingness to support this proposal. What we're basically asking for is enough support to carry on a five-year program to systematically address this issue, to begin to build trust and expand outreach in the community, so that people who are fearful and hesitant to come forward realize that they have a right. They have a right to do this. We need to educate the community more widely about labor rights and how absolutely unfair this kind of thing is. It's unfair to the... Obviously, to the vulnerable workers. It's also unfair to the community, because we... It means, among other things, lost purchasing power and unpaid taxes. It's unfair to employers who do the right thing. So we, as a community, need to be more concerted, and we want to be able to train volunteers in a more systematic way, to draw on other allies, to facilitate a broader network in the community that can really systematically address this.
Thank you. Thank you. And anyone else? I do see someone online. I'm going to welcome Noah. Welcome.
Hello, you can hear me, right?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. A couple things tonight. Okay, so last week, I mean, myself as a cop, but I called 911 because I saw one of ICPD's cop cars driving completely recklessly without their emergency, without any light sirens or anything. That if any person who was not a cop drove... Had driven like that, they would have been immediately pulled over for reckless driving. So I mean, and this is not the first time I've seen ICPD drive recklessly without any lights or anything like that. ICPD is notorious for just turning on their lights to go through stop signs, stoplights, red lights, because they think they're above the law, and they get to just bypass it, and they get away with it because they're cops. Who's going to stop them? The cops? No, obviously not. So yeah, that's just emblematic of the toxic culture that's just deep within ICPD that is not reformable, which is why the only way forward is to defund them and to take away their power by defunding them and not letting them in positions where they can abuse their power, like they constantly do when they're on a road, and they make a road not safe. Anyways, okay. And then the city refuses to release body cam footage of complaints against ICPD because they... The city has chosen that they would rather protect cops rather than let the public see the complaints against cops. And I'm just going to talk about what I've been talking about, I don't know, since, I mean, we all change your rules. The city has currently forced people to live outside because you are not providing a 24/7 low-barrier emergency shelter, especially since the winter shelter is no longer... No longer an option in shelter house. It has turned people away because there is not enough capacity in shelter house. And the city, by its inaction, is forcing people to live outside. So stop forcing people to live outside. Open the emergency shelter now. Y'all, do something. Stop forcing people to live outside. Aura, stop forcing people to live outside. Bruce, stop forcing people to live outside. Pauline, stop forcing people to live outside. John, stop forcing people to live outside. Sean, stop forcing people to live outside. Pauline, stop... Sorry, Janice, I mean, stop forcing people to live outside. I think I named you all. Oh, sorry, Anne, Megan, stop forcing people to live outside. Redmond, stop forcing people to live outside. And Jeff, especially fuck you, you're a fascist, and stop forcing people to live outside. You're a liar, too, Jeff. You're like a massive liar, and you can't answer your damn emails. Jeff, Redmond, and all of you, answer your goshdamn emails. Is it really that hard to answer emails and stop forcing people to live outside? He's likely, like, I mean, obviously, refuse these. You don't give a shit about the House's community. That's why you force them to live outside. That's the only conclusion that any reasonable person can come to, because you refuse to provide shelter to them. You should be ashamed.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address a topic that is not on our agenda? Seeing no one, thanks to everyone that has been a part of our community comment. We are on to item number nine, which is 2022 Water Pavement Patching. This is a resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the 2022 Water Pavement Patching Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open up the public hearing, and welcome.
Thank you. Just a second. So I'm Marty Van Dyke. I'm with Engineering. This is an annual project where we repair pavement that was damaged from water main breaks. So basically, when there's a water main break, the water division will repair the main, and then if pavement was damaged, they'll backfill with rock or do a temporary asphalt patch. And then this project combines all of the permanent pavement repairs into one project. So these are the locations for this year. So they all had a water main break this past winter or early spring, and so they all need street, sidewalk, or driveway repairs. And then, as additional water main breaks occur, we'll add those to this project as So the estimated construction cost just for the previously listed sites is $175,000. The bid opening would be May 25, and we'd award the contract June 6. Then we'd have the contract until the beginning of November, but construction for each individual site would only last about a week. So that's kind of an overview of the project, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
No questions. Thank you. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please come forth. Welcome.
Next one.
Okay, all right. Seeing no one, council... I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So move Thomas.
Second, Taylor.
Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 10 is 2022 Rochester Avenue Reconstruction from Ralston Creek to North First Avenue. This is a resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the 2022 Rochester Avenue Reconstruction from Ralston Creek to North First Avenue Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome.
Good evening, Council Mayor. I'm Justin Harland. I'm with Engineering. I'm a senior engineer for the city of Iowa City, and we're going to talk about the Rochester Ave Reconstruction Project. So I'd like to start out with a little bit of background. Rochester Ave serves in Arturo Street, averages about 7,000 vehicles a day. It also goes primarily by the Regina Schools. It requires frequent maintenance, potholes cracking and swelling, and it's kind of at the end of its useful service life. When I say end of the service life, I mean that we're putting more resources and money into it than we're getting out of it. In 2019, Center and Associates was hired to perform design services, which included a traffic study. In 2020, that traffic study was complete. It recommended the complete reconstruction, and on the western end, it recommended to do a three-to-two conversion. Part of the reasoning behind that three-to-two conversion on the western end was with that, it kind of encouraged traffic calming, which thus kind of reduced speeds, which has been noted as a problem in that corridor. With the three-to-two conversion, this also allows the roadway to accommodate bicycle So as a brief project overview, this is a full reconstruction, as I said. It includes storm sewer, water main improvements, as long as ADA improvements. It does include new traffic signals at Rochester and First Avenue. The speed limit will remain at 25 miles an hour. That is the design speed that we've chosen. And we've also tried to lessen the environmental impacts of this. You know, we've tried to be very mindful of protecting trees where we can't protect. We are going back and planting a few more trees with the project. So just to give you a kind of overview of the project limits, we start on the west end by Ralston Creek, and we move back to the east up through the First Avenue intersection. Kind of with this, our primary detour routes that we'll be focusing on will be Court Street, First Ave, Seventh Ave, and Muscatine Ave. As you can see, with Seventh Ave being in the project, it will be closed for a short time, but as we move further on, that will open back up, and we can use that. So kind of the typical sections of the roadway. This one, there's three different typical sections. They all kind of include similar attributes, but each one a little different. So the first one we're going to talk about is just your two through lanes with bike lanes. They're going to be 10-foot lanes, six-foot bike lanes, and you'll have a foot and a half buffer for the bike lanes. You'll also have a four-foot minimum parkway. You'll have a five-foot sidewalk, and we'll include ADA curb ramps. That's kind of standard throughout the project. The water main and storm sewers will shift sides. This configuration or this typical section will be the typical section for the project, and that will go from Montrose up to Seventh Avenue, and then also from Ashwood to Reedland So our second one is the cross-section that goes from that north Seventh Avenue up to Ashwood. It does not include sidewalk on the south side, as we've kind of discussed over other council meetings. That was decided. It does include a retaining wall with a paved parkway. The retaining wall heights will vary from two and a half foot to five and a half foot. And the parkway will be entirely paved. I know it kind of shows on that cross-section, there's a little green there on the right side. That will be paved. It allows for snow storage, as well as lessens the maintenance on residents to go out there and mow it, and city staff. So our third section is kind of the section up by Regina Schools. It kind of goes from Ashwood up to that First Ave. There will be a two-way left-turn lane or twiddle. It includes bike lanes. That twiddle will be 11-foot, also includes, you know, your sidewalks, ADA ramps, and it will include a pedestrian island for refuge for pedestrians crossing that way. We know there's a large volume of pedestrians that cross that location, and we would like to increase their safety where possible. So some of the unique project features, you don't see those on... See these on every project. You'll see a few, but these are kind of what makes each project different. For this one, we're going to install a pressure release valve vault, or a PRV. It's installed near the First Avenue and Rochester Avenue intersection, and this is part of our water department's plan for water pressure zoning. We create consistent zones throughout the city. It helps service and our water infrastructure. We're also going to install that pedestrian island. I've kind of hit on that a little bit. It's located near the West Regina driveway. It's a pic in that... You're pictured in the lower right corner, and it just increases pedestrian safety, or that's the intent. Another one you'll see is somewhat unique. This one is the conversion of overhead to underground utilities. And you know, currently, if anybody's driven by the corridor, you'll notice some construction. Currently, Mid-Americans in there converting overhead to underground. A lot of those are your electrical services, your communication services, or telecommunications services. You will see... Still see streetlights, so there will still be poles out there, but it reduces damage. Like, when we see major storm events, you know, those are now underground and not hanging above your head on poles. Kind of the project timeline, obviously, we're here today on May 3, holding the public hearing. The bid letting is scheduled for May 24, or date June 6. Construction start is July 5 of this year. I'll kind of get into the phasing of this project after this slide, so we can break that down a little more. On that milestone, what that is, is we want to, or we're shooting for, the pavement through the west leg of the First Avenue intersection to be done in December of '23. This allows other projects that we're working on, for instance, Court Street, if that schedule follows through, to detour through Rochester. The final completion date will be September 30th of 2024. The opinion of probable cost at $5.6 million. Initially, we thought the project could be done in 2023 with the dollar amount and the scope that we have in the plans. We felt that that was, put a big burden on the contractors, and as well as drive up our bid prices. So we gave them the option to complete that east leg of the First Avenue and Rochester intersection in 2024. So to kind of go through the further phasing, that stage one, which is from Ralston Creek to kind of halfway in between Rochester Court and Windsor Drive, that will be scheduled for the summer and fall of this year, 2022. Stage two will continue on towards the west. So where we pick up on '22, we'll go into '23, looking to go to Reedland Court, and that will be kind of the spring and summer of '23. Our idea is to stage the Rochester Court reconstruction in front of the Regina Schools during the summer while school's out. That is the intent. Whether it happens that way, that's kind of up to the contractor and our construction seasons, weather. We go further west to the west leg of the First Avenue Rochester intersection. There needs to be some temporary pavement that goes there. That's why you're seeing the schedule, or the stage 4A, 4B, and 4C. So 4A will be the temporary pavement that allows through-traffic and turn movements through there, so we can keep the First Avenue intersection open. And then the west leg will be completed in the summer and fall of 2023. That just leaves the east leg of the First Avenue intersection in the spring and summer of 2024. With that, I'll close that out and open it up to questions.
Is it Seventh Avenue that is the entrance into Hickory Hill Park?
Yes, I believe it is.
Was there any consideration of putting in a pedestrian island at that intersection?
I cannot answer that for the, for the design. I know that we've asked Snyder to include as many, you know, pedestrian accommodation facilities as we, as we can. I don't know if specifically that was looked into. I can find out for it if you would like.
Yeah, I think that, you know, it seems to me, I'm sure there's quite a bit of movement across Rochester at that location, maybe not as high as at the school, but Hickory Hill is a major destination, so I would expect there was quite a bit of it.
I would imagine that the, is there another, if there, if some of the schedule were to slip for around Regina, is there another way to get in there? Or would, or does that just really, we have, does that really have to end up being during that spring, that summer?
So the nice thing with Regina is they do have two driveways or two entrances that we could possibly use. We could also utilize temporary pavements to make sure that they have that there. That being said, it's still going to be an inconvenience if that were to happen, but I think we've been in contact with them, and I think we can work something with them that works for everyone.
Okay.
I was just going to mention something about the, the question about the pedestrian refuge at Seventh Avenue. The challenge that's going to be there is really the space within the corridor. So the one up at Regina, we're putting in there because it's going to be a three-lane section. There's not an opposing left turn movement there, so there's space there that we can put that in without taking away something else. At Seventh Avenue, the challenge that you get into is it's a tight corridor. We aren't looking at getting additional right-of-way, and with left turns there, there's not that same condition that we were doing with the Regina location. So I think it's just, they're a little bit different, and there's just, with having the, the goal being to go to two lanes and narrow up the roadway, that sort of is contour to what the pedestrian refuge would require.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? And welcome, Noah.
Hello.
Hello.
So can you hear? Hello.
Yes.
So my comment relates to this because currently, the city, some streets, currently the city is forcing people to live on the streets by not providing.
All right. You need to stay on topic. I'm going to end the conversation now, and thank you.
Actually, no, because I'm not done, Bruce.
You're done.
I'm not done.
We need people to stay on topic. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved Weiner.
Second, Taylor.
Counsel discussion. Roll call, oh, please.
Going to be a long project. I mean, people, people, there are a lot of people up there. People are really going to have to get used to having their lives and roots disrupted and be, and be prepared for it. And I guess that will require a fair amount of communication as well, so that, I mean, it's needed, and it's going to be a big, long project.
Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 11 is Eastwood Drive-South Lawn Drive Intersection Improvement. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Eastwood Drive and South Lawn Drive Intersection Improvement Project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing. And welcome.
Mr. Mayor and Council, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Alain Dumake, and I'm a senior civil engineer in the Public Works Department. Today, I'll be giving you a brief overview of the proposed improvement at Eastwood Drive and South Lawn Drive in the City of Iowa City. The project, just like the title says, is located at the intersection of Eastwood Drive and South Lawn Drive at the northeast, northwest corner of Lucas Elementary. The existing condition at this intersection show the pavement is beyond useful life, and there is deficient street drainage, deteriorated pavement. Southeast storm intake is severely damaged and is currently covered with steel plate, which presents a hazard for vehicle traffic and pedestrians. Sidewalk ramps are currently not ADA compliant, and this project will address all these issues. The proposed improvements are replacing the existing storm sewer system with new storm sewer pipe and intakes. Upgrade existing six-inch ductile iron water main to eight-inch PVC pipe. New eight-inch pavement with six-inch integral curb and subdrains. New curb ramps to meet ADA compliance. Relocation of an existing fire hydrant. Some of the estimated quantities are 101 linear feet of storm sewer and associated structures. Approximately 343 square yards of pavement replacement. Approximately 156 linear feet of trenched water main. And approximately 106 square yards of sidewalk replacement and associated landscape restoration. The estimated cost for this project is $225,000. And the construction is scheduled to begin June 3rd with substantial completion date the Friday before the school starts, August 19, 2022, and the final completion date of September 30th, 2022. And with this, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Sorry, can you just repeat when the beginning of the project?
Beginning of the project would be June 3rd.
And, and in September?
September 30th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? And I'm going to welcome Noah. I do want to say that I've already warned you that you must stay on topic. If you do not stay on topic after this, you will not be recognized the rest of this meeting. But we do want to hear from you, so welcome, Noah.
Hello.
Welcome.
Hello, guys. All you bastards, stop forcing the folks to live outside. Stop forcing people to live outside.
Anyone else from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, second.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Alter. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 12 is Transit Funding Application. This is a resolution authorizing a filing of an application with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the fiscal year 2023. Iowa Department of Transportation State Transit Assistance and Federal Transit Administration funding. I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to welcome our staff. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Good to see you all back at home again.
Yes.
The MPO of Johnson County is going to be filing on our behalf, consolidated funding application, transit funding application, on behalf of Iowa City Transit with the Iowa DOT. This is an annual process. You see me about this time every year. We, we are essentially asking for what is really formula funding. It's kind of our formal approval process to request the funding for both our state DOT funding, federal funding, and for our wish list of items, which we have a long wish list of items for transit. So in terms of state transit assistance program, the request is for approximately $571,000. For, in terms of our federal operating assistance, it's approximately $1.9 million in annual funding. And then for our pair transit services, it's approximately $155,000 in annual funding. And the request, I would call it the wish list items, in terms of what we hope to receive federal funding for, is $21 million. And of course, it's inclusive of funding for a potential transit facility. So we want to make sure we keep that item on our wish list in the hopes of being granted grant awards in the future. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about this application process.
Sounds like you're getting off easy.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Seconded, Burgess.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Burgess. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 14 is 2022 Bond Resolution. Resolution directing, direct, resolution directing sale of $10,255,000 General Obligation Bonds Series 2022. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Burgess.
Seconded, Weiner.
All right, and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is for our geo-bond issue that happened this morning, our bond sale. And so here today is Maggie Berger from Spear Financial, who is our financial advisor, and she's going to walk you guys through the results.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. As Nicole mentioned, my name is Maggie Berger with Spear Financial. We did take bids this morning on $10,255,000 of General Obligation Bonds Series 2022. You did receive four bids as part of that 30-minute window, and we are recommending the lowest true interest rate by law from Morgan Stanley and Company of New York, New York, at a true interest rate of 2.9355%. You can see from the first to the last, we range from a 2.9355 down to a 3.0586. We've also included that Moody's Investors Rating Report. The city does do this exercise when they're issuing debt, and you were reaffirmed at the AAA status, which is the highest that you can acquire from the rating agency. They always talk about how stable your credit profile is. The economic base is very stable here. Always, we talk about what could lead to a downgrade, substantial and sustained reduction in reserve funds. We will say it again and again, Moody's and any other rating agency loves cash. They want to make sure that you have plenty of cash on hand to operate the city in a time of need. This goes on and talks about how you have grown your tax base by an average annual of 5.7% annually, that your median family income is 108% of the national median income, which is fantastic for them. It also talks about how you, across all funds, have $65 million or 80% of your fiscal year '21 operating revenue as reserve funds, and that, again, is a cash reserve that they like. Amortization is rapid within the city, with 100% of your general obligation debt, principal and interest being paid within a 10-year period. So they do include the scorecard on the, second to the last page of the report, and that does indicate, you know, where you are in line with AA, AAA, single A categories. We've seen some upward movement as well in fund balance, and that's always helpful to them. We've included the bid and bidders tabulation, so that you can see the interest rates that were bid. And as part of this sale, you are receiving a small premium. We'll say small in comparison to years in the past, and really, that premium is about $535,000. That is excess money that can be used, not only for the debt service payments, but also any cost overruns on these projects that were part of this issuance. The final debt service schedule is on the back page, and we do always protect the city with a call feature, and that just means that the bonds become optionally redeemable after June 1st of 2028. Once that payment is made, you could call the bonds in whole or in part. Anytime after that date, you would also have the opportunity to refund them if interest rates are lower than that remaining four, down to a 3.3%. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have this evening.
Very detailed report. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Would anyone like to address this topic? Seeing no one from the public, counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Can we say something?
I don't think we have motions, Mayor.
We don't have motions, but I wanted to.
We did.
Burgess and Weiner.
We did, right.
Sorry, my apologies.
But I just wanted to note that it, it really is to our advantage to, to maintain the AAA rating, because we, we get essentially more bang for our buck. We, it, and it's a, it puts us in a much better financial position, and it costs us less to get the money. And I think the timing of this was great, too, because I think the Fed is about to raise rates, so.
I'd just like to say, Susan Memes, if you're listening, you always stressed about the AAA rating, and I never did quite understand it, but thank you for helping me understand it, and here we are.
Thank you to staff and for shepherding and protecting the money and making wise choices and allowing us to be able to enjoy this.
All right. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 15 is Assessment Schedule. Resolution adopting an assessment schedule of unpaid mowing, cleaning up of property, snow removal, sidewalk repair, and stop balk repair charges, and directing the city clerk to certify the same to Johnson County Treasurer for collection in the same manner as property taxes. And can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Thomas.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. Item number 15 is Assessment Schedule. Resolution adopted an assessment schedule of unpaid mowing, cleaning up of property, snow removal, sidewalk repair, and stop balk repair charges, and directing the city clerk to certify the same to Johnson County Treasurer for collection in the same manner as property taxes. And can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Burgess.
And anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes. Motion passed, a seven to zero. Item number 16 is Announcement of Vacancies New. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Senior Senator Commission, one vacancy to fill the unexpired term effective upon appointment through December 31st, 2024. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, June 14th, 2022. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Alter.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, a seven to zero. Item number 17 is An announcement of Vacancies Previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill the unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, May 31st, 2022. Airport Commission, two vacancies to fill a four-year term. Historic Preservation Commission at Large, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission Brown Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission Summit Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Housing and Community Development, three vacancies to fill a three-year term. Library Board of Trustees, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Planning and Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, May 10th, 2022. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year, five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission Iowa City Representative, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Board of Appeals Building Design Professional, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission East College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Public Art Advisory Committee, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Public Art Advisory Committee, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled, and we are at item number 18, which is City Council Information.
I just put out that the Electric Bus Bash is rain or shine this Friday afternoon at 2:00 PM. Looks like it's going to be over in the Chauncey if it's, if it's going to rain. But I guess they will put out that. Farmer's Market starts on Saturday. So whether, whether or not it looks like spring, it's here. And there are a lot of events going on this weekend, including the Nami Walk and some other events.
I just wanted to say thank you to those who came out for the premiere of A Decent Home last week in Iowa City. I know that several members of council were able to make it, and those who weren't have been showing a lot of interest in learning more about what was, was in the film. And so I appreciate that, because that really touches on our affordable housing crisis locally and across the country. So thank, thank you for, everybody in the community who, who got out to see that.
That was a very powerful film, and your mom was one of the stars, so that was kind of fun, too.
I might be a little biased and very proud of her for, for doing that work, so.
I actually want to mention, I had a lovely meeting with a pickleball club that was at Mercer Park, and it was to, to look at the courts. But I now have a standing offer to learn, a free lesson. They don't charge for them, so. But no, they're just an amazingly enthusiastic and passionate group of people who, in fact, have been, you know, kind of, they said during COVID, this was kind of a lifesaver for them to be able to be around and to, you know, draw some pleasure. And I learned about pickleball in ways that I knew nothing about. I didn't realize it was as huge as it is, and so, and it's all ages. I mean, I met with some folks who, they were in their 80s, but they're like, they're, they're teaching junior high kids. So it was just a really cool thing, and it's growing like crazy. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to shout out Myra and Duane and Jill Miller. Those were some ambassadors. I'm not sure if that's the exact name for them, but I think they self-styled it, so.
I did want to mention that I had an opportunity to see Pierre and Natasha in The Great Comet of 1812, which was a production of Riverside Theater. And congratulations to Riverside Theater. That, that is truly an extraordinary produ, uh, production for our Iowa City Theater to be able to pull that off was really an accomplishment. Unfortunately, I think it's sold out now for the rest of its run, which may be through May 7th. I wish they could extend it, because not many people can attend anyone showing. And it's such a large production. You know, you, I would want it to have as large an audience as it deserves. But in any event, congratulations to Riverside and all who participated.
Great. Any other comments? I did want to just, again, say thanks to Counselor Weiner and to Mayor Pro, Mayor Pro Tem, and to all of the counselors that's been filling in. Last week, I was on vacation, very much in need of vacation. And there were great events happening that counselors definitely stepped in. I know Counselor Burgess was over in the South District, busy over there. And I, and our counselors are real engaged. We just heard Counselor Thomas talking about, you know, Riverside Theater. There is so much happening, and I do encourage people to get out. Rain or shine. We're going to move on to item number 19, which is Report on Items from City Staff. And we'll start with our city manager.[1761.71]